Why is the fire department here? They've already got their money.
Because we miss you.
I'll take it.
All right, let's start. Hello, welcome back from lunch. This is the June 11th board meeting. We'll move on to item 22.
Item 22 is from the administrative office. To conduct the fiscal year 2019-20 recommended budget hearing, receive presentations on the recommended budget from the CAO and various department heads, and provide the CAO with direction for any requested changes to the recommended budget.
Thank you. I will hand this over to Mr. Alt, who had all four weeks to get this budget together. So I'm sure he's mastered it inside of there. And Al, lead us.
Thank you Chairman Garamendi. Good afternoon, members of the board, and thank you, members of the public, for being here. I'd first like to start by saying it's an honor for me to be able to present this budget to you. I wish the numbers were always stronger, but I appreciate having the opportunity, and it certainly is an honor to be your CAO. I'll start here real quickly by saying this might be a different presentation than what you're familiar with. I intend to be quite succinct. I had about a 60-page presentation, but I saw all the tabs on Supervisor Mills' budget book, so I'll reserve as much time as possible for questions and discussion from the board. And I apologize for technology challenges. Krista is leading the flipping of the pages for the presentation for me, so if you hear me pause for a moment to get on the next slide. So go ahead and please move forward. Okay, we won't stay here long, but just quickly, what we're going to cover, just the overall budget, some background information for you. We'll talk about the influences and why I made certain recommendations that I have, and then we'll dive right into the substance of the budget. And so why don't we go to the next slide, please? So overall, just the general message about the budget. This budget overall is balanced. We have reserves funded at the board-approved policy level. We have contingency funded at the board-approved policy level as well. This budget, the 1920 fiscal year budget, reduces imbalance in expenditures versus revenues compared to last year's budget, and I'll show you some detail that evidences that. There is a however to that. We do balance our budget in this year using cash carry, as you'll see, and a substantial teeter transfer to make the budget balanced. Moving on to the next slide. Some background on the budget. This is our second consecutive year we've had opportunity to use the OpenGov system. I think it's important to note, one of the things maybe the board and certainly the public doesn't know is not only do we use OpenGov, but we use WorkEva as a publisher software, for lack of a better word, for the budget book. So what we found in this year's budget development, and probably last year's as well, is the interface between our financial system to OpenGov to WorkEva causes us challenges in some of our data. So we have to work quite extensively to try and weed out those challenges. I'll say we, but in the acknowledgements, we'll reference people who do that work particularly. More budget background. If you just cycle back to the final budget in the year we're in, CAO Tim Lutz did that budget, and the mid-year budget interim, CAO Manuel Lopez did that budget, and now here we are with me presenting this budget. And that's significant to have three different budgets in 10 months, because as I present in the budget book, or at least suggest in the budget book and the budget message, while the numbers are science, there's a lot of art that goes into interpreting this. So you're seeing the influences of three different people putting together budgets, and it's why you'll see some of the moving parts in this budget compared to what you saw in mid-year and in last year's final. We'll talk those through a little bit, but hopefully all weed out, you know, those issues with consistency as I've spoken about being here long term. So the department managers, some more background. The department managers were provided their budget instructions on March 27. The suggestion in the instructions at the time was the budget was to be status quo for positions, but for where they could be justified additional positions. Status quo was intended to include our natural salary progression, negotiated agreements, and per se lump sum, which you'll see is a significant part of the budget this year. And the budget instructions specifically said personnel requests were to be kept minimal. And so what I can say to the credit of the department heads, there wasn't as much work as I may have needed to do in previous years, because all of the department heads kept their budget requests pretty tight, and everything that they did put forward, they had specific justification for. And we'll dive into the details of that more. So one important piece on the next slide I'd like to speak to, probably one of the biggest challenges we had in this year's budget, is our budget timeline. And I don't necessarily intend to review all of it, but if you draw your attention to the red text in the budget timeline, all of those meetings were delayed. And so the first two weeks of those budget meetings with the department heads were scheduled before my start. And so they were all moved out to when I started. So in addition to overlap with Manuel and getting onboard with other county processes, we were also having these meetings. And so they were extended well beyond what we intended for the completion. And that certainly impacted the budget book, and not the data so much. Your budget book has all of the relevant data, has all the necessary schedules for the state controller's office, but you'll note it doesn't have much in terms of color or graphics in it to try and be illustrative for the data that you see in it. So my term for it is it's a budget book light based on the type runway that we had. Okay, moving on, some influences, moving past that slide into some data. I think this is a really important reflection of what you see before you here today in terms of my recommendation, is if you look in particularly the last year, I think we've lost sight a little bit of the fact that our expenditures last year that were adopted at final were 70 million versus 60 million of revenue. So I don't need to do the math for you. It's a big number there that we were in the deficit when we approved last year's budget. So you'll see through all of the discussion and my recommendations that that was a significant influence on everything that I recommended as we're going forward. Next slide, please. Okay, another big influence on my recommendation is, and I pulled this right from the LAO's economic outlook. I'm not in the business of trying to predict the national or state economy, but the LAO is. And so a specific quote from them, I've added the emphasis here. There's an anticipation in not only the state, but the national landscape, that we will see slowing in the rate of economic growth. And not so much even slowing, but a slight decline and progressive decline in the out years. And I wouldn't describe it as what we've seen in recessions in the past. It's not projected to be a deep decline, but certainly not economic expansion as we've been experiencing. Another influence on my budget was the mid-year projections, and so I was really quite concerned about the review of the mid-year budget and trying to navigate my own way between how I would present my recommended budget to the board when not so long ago, you heard in a presentation in this very room that there was $9 million of cash carry being projected. So an important point I want to make about that is that wasn't exclusive of contingency at the time. There was over $3 million worth of contingency which was included in that number. So it wasn't purely $9 million of cash carry. It represented contingency as well. In addition to that, I'd like to remind that we also approved about a half a million dollars worth of expenditures at mid-year. There was a COLA for one employee group that came in at mid-year. We saw an increase in positions being filled in the second half of the year versus the first half of the year. And then we had appropriations available for the department managers to, or the department heads to expand in the last half of the year. And so when you put all of those things together, as we got closer to the end of the year, that we've seen that our cash carry has reduced over what was presented at mid-year. Moving on to the next slide, and this is more for the public than it is for the board. I know you know the theories behind forecasting, and you yourself do a lot of work in this, but it's really helpful to understand that, and this is right from GFOA, or Government Financial Officers Association. I'm happy to send that link out, but really, there's two ways you can see we can be conservative in how we project the budget, and that's revenues low and expenditures high. That's straight out of the CFO handbook. This really gives us the benefit of reducing the likelihood of a shortfall, and that's certainly a circumstance that we're in, where we can't, at the end of the year, run the risk of having a shortfall. The downside is, what you'll see here, is the numbers tend not to balance. It's not as easy for us to balance, so we had to do some more work with teeter and some other things to make the budget balance. Hopefully, as we move out into the out years, we'll be a little bit more on the objective side of things. But the last thing I wanted to do in my, you know, fourth week or fifth week here, and my first budget with this board, is put a very aggressive budget forward and have us hit the end of that before the year ends in the next fiscal year. So I went with the conservative route, and that could mean for us at final that we have a better position than what's being projected here. In fact, that's pretty likely, so we'll have some more to talk about at the final. Diving quickly into our revenue trends, I just wanted to give you a quick look here at our revenue. I'm catching up on my own notes here. So probably the most important note, you know, the trends are important, but probably the most important note I'd like to make here is for our county, we obviously know what makes up taxes, and we can see a nice progression here in our taxes. But if you start looking at all our other revenue numbers, for example, state revenue and federal revenue, it's all over the map here. This really makes it tough for us to figure out what our revenues are going to be. State's up, federal's down, and you'll see in all of our other areas, there's some pretty wide swings in what we've had over the past years. This is unique to our county because some of the disasters that we've had, and certainly because of some of the legislative decisions that have been made here as well, it's certainly caused that revenue to swing pretty widely in the past few years. Next slide is, I won't hover here too much, but when we went to OpenGov, there was a work group that set about deciding service categories and identifying our service categories so over the years we could compare longitudinal data across our service categories. If, I hope I'm stating it correctly, but last year and this year were the first two years we've done it, so the data's not all that relevant yet, but in the out years, we'll be able to look more closely at how we find our different service categories. Next slide, please. This is simply a pictorial view of how we've, our general fund revenue by type. And so I won't stay there long. We can always come back to the revenue slides and talk about particular revenue sources if there's an interest. After reviewing our revenue projections and our comparisons, we'll move on to our budget This is the roll-up of all of our departments and what they've requested, also compared to the 2018-19 year. So this is all funds as well, so we'll go ahead and we'll move to the next slide. This is just an overall look, and we didn't actually in the budget emphasize many of our programs that are not general fund, where we really drilled down on the general fund in the rest of the presentation. Let's move past that one. So much like we showed in the revenues, I wanted to give an example of our trend, our trend for expenses over the last four years. So this is a little bit more steady than our revenue's been. So you can see in the current year, we're proposing expenditures of $77 million. I know there may be questions about that, so I won't hover over that number too much, but as a reminder, in those expenditures are PG&E settlement funds and other funds that have associated expenditures as well. So it artificially inflates our revenue on one side, but also inflates our expenditures on one side, on the other side as well. Moving forward quickly into how I made my determinations, I'll say mine. I certainly own them in the CAO's recommended budget, but we had a work group of folks that sat and looked at what would our criteria be moving forward on if we made any recommendations. I will tell you, I alone considered at one point simply just moving a status quo budget forward to the board, and just looking at what departments had last year, zeroing everything out and additional requests. Quite frankly, it probably would have been an easy way to go about it in my fourth week, but I felt it unfairly put the board in a bad position where you would have to consider a lot more requests from the podium, and it certainly wouldn't have been fair to the department heads who had significant justifications for the things that they moved forward. So ultimately, with help from a work group, I came up with this criteria on how we would put recommendations forward. From a personnel perspective, if it, it's pretty simple. If it fulfilled a mandate, we were blessed. We were quick to approve that. We also focused on public safety, and you'll see in the recommendations, in this case, it translates into a recommendation for an additional officer. Wherever there was a recommendation and the department head had a justification that included revenue generation, we put a focus on those as well. Certainly, we need more revenue, and if we bring positions onboard that will help generate that, we emphasize those. There were also requests that were net zero budget impact, or in some cases savings, that department heads put forward requests that if they had a particular position, they could move forward without other unfilled positions that they previously had. And there's two particular positions that improved operational efficiency, and we can talk to those, talk about those when we get to those, if you'd like. So that was a criteria for positions, and as we go along a little farther, I'll stop, and we can review the positions and handout. But moving on on the criteria, in capital improvements, you'll notice that the capital improvement project budget is less this year than it was last year, and it really nets out to anything that was requested in the new budget I didn't put forward. And my request to the board is that you give us an opportunity to do the work that you've already prioritized in previous actions, and let us fulfill that plate of work, and then we can layer on at a later point in time, either in this year and next budgets, where we have additional projects. But you know what some of those projects are. One that I'll highlight is, in particular, the old jail demo, and that was a subject of a lot of discussion here in the mid-year, and so we're committed to getting those done and completing those. And so that's why the capital improvement projects budget is really pretty slim. Well, actually, it doesn't have any new requests in it. And then, of course, capital assets. I'm not going to speak to every one of the capital assets. We may get into that discussion in the discussion from the budget book as we move forward, but we can always come back to it if you like. In the case of personnel, I provided, the public has and the board has a handout as well. It's one sheet, front and back. It has a list of all of the positions that we recommended, and it has those positions that we also deleted. And I'm going to make a particular note for the sheriff who's here. Of the deleted positions, there are three that I think he will speak to, and I'll comment on as well, that upon further review, I would suggest that, and Rick will give you the information on them, but that we support putting three of the deleted positions back in. If you want to talk about these positions now, we can do that, or we can move on and come back to the specific positions and talk on them.
Let's do it, section by section.
All right, then I won't stay on those long. We'll move on to the next slide. And so one of the things I wanted to give you a picture of as we move forward is, we talk about what the reserve position and what the contingencies are going to be. I want you to understand where some of our money resides as you're considering this budget. The general fund, reserve fund balance isn't something that we affected at all. This balance is the same as what you've seen in previous years. So there's not a concern that we're using reserves, per se, to balance the budget. However, if you go to the next slide, we show you the transition in teeter fund balance, which is projected to be pretty strong at the end of the year with $6.4 million, but we rely on a significant amount of teeter funds to balance the budget. And we just, I just want to make sure that as we move forward, that we understand that we're utilizing that fund, at least in my recommendation, to balance the budget. And the next slide. That's important that we're relying on teeter fund to that extent, because you'll see a pattern, if you go back to that, oh, that one's fine. Any of these slides that say 18-19 on them are from the final presentation, the final budget presentation last year from CAO Lutz. And what I wanted to do is come back to that and highlight some certain things that we see as a pattern from that budget to this budget, because once that was adopted, that pretty much set our footprint for this year. We have worked as much as we can to minimize expenditures over revenues, but there's some things that are considerations in what came for you in final that might prompt some more discussion as we move forward. It's still absolutely a necessity for us to consider revenue-producing activities and where we might have opportunity for additional revenues. Why don't you go to the next slide, please? One more, please. And so what I'm referring to, same thing that CAO Lutz referred to, is just, you know, as you'll see as we go forward, we either have to address the expenditure side, or we have to address the revenue side. In other slides, you'll see Tim's suggestion is that we're at the point that our services are really detrimentally impacted if we make any reductions. So it really makes a more viable approach to look at revenue enhancements, and that will be the case in this budget as well. I won't go through each one of these, because we can talk about the status of where they're at, or whether they're generating revenue in the discussion, but it is important to note that we need to continue to pursue those activities. Next slide, please. Okay, so prior to having completed the budget, one of the things that I've heard just in the hallways talking to supervisors is about economic development in particular, and so I wanted to touch on that while we're here. Catherine knows that it's an important goal of ours, and we're putting forward as a goal in my office that we'll have a business plan for economic development, and that's certainly one of the important areas we need to look at, revenue enhancements. Moving on to the next slide. This is an important slide, because as we go through the budget, it's easy for our employees that sit out beyond us in this room to hear the budget and hear the numbers and get concerned about, what does this mean for us? How's it going to impact the services? How's it going to impact my particular department? And in the final budget, Tim introduced a discussion, and maybe years passed, that we could look at freezing or deleting vacant positions. And I can tell you, in the budget we're in, I've already referenced that we've removed some positions that had been vacant and unfilled for multiple years. I don't see in our current circumstance, at least in the recommended budget, suggesting that we freeze positions, but depending on how our cash position is at year-end close and what final looks like, these are things that could potentially be more difficult discussions we'd need to have there. I'll go back, though, to the forecasting slide that I provided earlier. We've been very conservative in our forecasting, so I don't anticipate that we're going to have any shocks in a downward way at the year-end close, that we're more likely to be in a better position at year-end close, just because we've been so conservative. And I make that point because I don't think it'll make these discussions a reality, at least in final. So where do we go from here? I said I was going to be quite succinct in this, and I've gone through it pretty quickly, but I want to live here for a moment. As we move forward, you all have heard in the interview process, and many others have heard in other meetings, that I've talked a lot about, that me providing a 90-day assessment as to where I see we are after being here for three months, what my recommendations and what my goals would be. And I think we have that planned, depending on general plan, being a study session in July. And so as we move forward from this budget, it'll help us inform where we are in July and moving into the new year, new fiscal year, and how we align the CAO's goals, as you see them, with a review of the board's priorities, and using that for our fiscal year footprint on what our priority of our work's going to be, and help us move out further into developing longer-term board priorities and leading to us having something closer to a priority-based budgeting, and that we're really connecting our funding streams to our priorities, as opposed to that which we've always done. And also, us having regular presentations to the board on how we, as department heads doing the work, meet the objectives and how we're being accountable to the board, so that when you're adopting a budget, you know there are activities that are going to get done as a priority of the board, along with the funding that's been allocated towards I know I've gone through the detail quite quickly. We can obviously come back to anything that you'd like to, but I would like to provide some acknowledgements. Obviously, I really appreciate the board in giving me this opportunity, but I see Rebecca here, I don't see Barbara Biddick. There aren't enough gift cards in this county. We'd have to go out of county to give enough gift cards to Barbara for the work that she did, just absolutely tireless, and Rebecca as well, giving us a lot of support. Krista really led the development of this, because she was caught in the transition between Manuel and I, which is kind of a tough transition. We're a little bit different in personality and approach, and so she had to navigate that, and our staff helped her do that quite well. HR had a significant contribution, too, in how we developed the criteria and what positions we're going to move forward. And then really, the department heads deserve a lot of credit. There wasn't as much work as there could have been in this budget had they just put forward, you know, what they would hope to get. I wouldn't say a wish list, but there's a deep list of justification, good justification for needs out there. But the department heads were quite respectful about what they put forward, and their fiscal staff in their areas, I see a few out there, did a lot of hard work to make sure that I could understand what they were putting forward and understand what their department goals were as well. So I said I'd be relatively brief. I got through it pretty quick, but I know by all the tabs in the budget books, we're about to get ready for some questions.
Thank you very much, Al. Let me check with the board really quick. What I'm thinking in my work is, if anybody has any really broad general public comments, not getting into specifics of this budget, this might be a good opportunity then. We have the budget presentations by, it looks like the sheriff, the DEA, and the library want to make presentations, and I thought what we'd do is, as they do their presentations at that time, we take on that section, then we do our comments, and we just keep, we'll just work in light to move our way through the list. Does that work for everybody? Kerry, Ben, good? He's kind of okay, let's have him. If anybody's got a better way to do this, I'm wide open. Okay. Al, bring them forward.
All right, first, we have, we have... We have the sheriff, if you wouldn't mind coming on up, Rick, and I know you have a presentation, sheriff and undersheriff. I understand you have some material as well.
Oh, wait, did you want me to do the, is there anybody who needs to make a general, broad, public comment about the budget before we start getting into the details? If it's like about the sheriff's budget, wait till we do the sheriff's thing. It's about environment health, wait for the public work, same. But if you want to make some really broad statement...
I'll come in and queue up.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. We need a couple of minutes to set up, anyway.
Perfect. And if you don't mind, the sheriff's setting up at the same time that you're talking. Bonnie, yep?
Yes.
All right.
As I look through here, I'm wondering if there's been any consideration for the 330 home care workers that are working at minimum wage? Is there any...
Bonnie, would that be under HHS budget?
HHSA, yes.
We're going to take on HHS? We're going to take on Health and Human Services as an item?
I'm sorry, you're going to do...
We're going to take, that would be best put under, when we get to Health and Human Services, because that's going to be sent in Kristen's budget.
Okay.
It's pretty hard to find something that's broad enough to cover the broad comments.
Well, I hope it doesn't hurt anybody else's budget when I come up here and demand we have consideration.
I'd expect nothing less, Bonnie.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I just have a general question of the board. On your, still facing a long-term structural deficit, it mentioned the cannabis and 6.8 million of major C monies. Earlier this year, it was brought up that there were 3.5 million still outstanding on those taxes... those taxes collectible. Have any of those taxes been collected, and are they part of this budget, in any one of these departments?
Ms. Weatherby, what we'll do is we'll collect all the public comments, and then if staff want to do a rebuttal, they can.
All right, thanks.
There are other general public comments. Patricia? Excuse me, sorry, Patricia. Al, you got to look over your shoulder.
Did I cut off somebody?
You cut off Patricia. Al, go ahead, let's go.
My comments are short. If you look back over the years, it seems like not only our county, but other counties have been suffering from major catastrophes, fires. And I wonder, what we basically do now, we don't plan for this, we look to the state or the federal government and for them to help us with disaster relief. And this pattern is followed not only with our own county, but all over the United States. Well, the effect of this on the taxpayer is quite an overriding expense. We're paying much more than it would be if we had money set aside for expected disasters or insurance premiums and then handled it ourselves under our own control. And I know we're not going to change anything right now, but it could be the good source of discussion with CSAC and other associations to start to change the accountability for funding disasters. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been attending the general plan meetings at the commissioners', and one of the things I noticed is that they're trying to get people, more people, and they're going to go around and examine people's homes and their properties and requiring a giving up of a certain amount of privacy. And then, of course, those people need to be paid, and it's going to come out of somebody's pocket, either the people that supposedly don't comply with somebody's idea of what ought to be. And so I'm here to tell you that, I asked them, I go, where are you guys going to get all the money to pay these people that they intend to hire to go around and cause havoc with people? And to me, it's havoc, maybe not to you, but to me, it is.
Who needs a break? Okay, we're going to have a, no more public comment, we will have a quick rebuttal from the CAO, and then we're going to take a break while they deal with IT issues. The sheriff gets set up.
I don't necessarily have to do the job.
Okay. Supervisor, stop her. They got to go.
Okay, never mind.
Okay. No, it's all right. Under sheriff, sheriff, you guys, you got the ball.
Jerry, you got the handouts right there? Oh, sorry.
Good afternoon. Jim Macedo from the sheriff's office. There's some additional copies of our PowerPoint presentation up here on the dais while you get yours organized. The sheriff and I are going to work back and forth through this budget. Before I get started, I'd like to just make a couple of quick introductions. Next to Ms. Von Lauda is Sheriff Services Technician Wanda Matic, and to her right is Oscar Flamenco, our new senior financial analyst. Oscar comes to us from a very reputable CPA firm in the Bay Area. He has a lot of experience in private budgeting, but he's getting his feet wet in governmental budgeting, which is an entirely different animal. So with that, we're going to jump right into, the first slide is just an overview slide. I'm going to move quickly through the first couple of slides. Next slide, please. We're going to discuss our total operating budget briefly, provide the board with a staffing update, go through the sheriff's office requests. We're going to talk about how those requests impact the community and the organization. We're going to recap our critical needs, and then we'll take any questions at that particular time. Next slide, please. So the sheriff's office total operating budget is roughly $20,386,000 of the departmental requested. The general fund contribution is 19.8. $1.4 million of those dollars are being transferred in from what formerly was referred to as designated funds, those are now special revenue funds, and an additional $2.2 million in taxes and one-time refunds. And lastly, the sheriff's office is generating $1.35 million in revenue and grants, that's for work or grants or contracts that the sheriff's office has that we bring in to offset the general fund contribution. At the bottom, the bottom bullet, our departmental requested general fund contribution, the net cost is 14.8 million. Next slide, please. Okay, we're going to get into staffing. I know that's been a big concern for the board, as well as it's been in the public's eye. We've had a lot of success in recruiting. The sheriff's going to come up and discuss a couple of different types of employees and how that affects our staffing and recruiting. Next slide.
Okay, if you take a look at the graph or the slide there, on the left is the general fund. Back in 2010, 11, we had 65 sworn personnel. Back to 2015 and 16, we're at 56 sworn. Nine of those were put in the parking lot or frozen positions, if you want to term them that aspect. Take nine from 65, you end up with 56. We have one school resource officer right now, and that was a position that the county gave us a couple of years ago. I'm going to put another school resource officer in place with one of my deputies. That'll occur in July when they go back to school. We have one on one side of the county, one on the other side of the county, like we had many, many years ago. We've got three detectives right now and a sergeant. What I didn't put up there, because it just takes too many lines, at one point, we had six detectives, one for each beat in the county, one sexual assault investigator, and one elder abuse investigator. So we're actually down three positions right there. Our marijuana enforcement team, we have five positions available. We have two vacant positions right now. Again, with the staffing levels, we just haven't been able to fill those two other positions. In 17 and 18, we are down to 52 sworn position, and out of that, five of those are in the Met team. So back to, if you compare notes between 17 and 18, we have 47 deputies, and in the general fund, back in 10 and 11, we had 65. That shows you how far we've gone down and not been able to backfill positions. And a lot of those positions were frozen and no longer exist. Patrol, right now, we have 17 on staff and four sergeants, which gives us 21. To run the program that I'm looking at with the extra beat deputy that we started talking about, is going to take 24 deputies with four sergeants to do it efficiently and corrective, corrective, correctly. And what that'll do is that'll take and bring down calls for service times down, we'll have more guys out on patrol, so the public's view, they're going to see more cops out there. When bad guys see more cops, they tend not to do as many bad things. So that's the goal that I've been working at getting at. On the right hand is our contracts and grants, our court security services, there's five of them over there. And actually, you can jump those five off of that 65 sworn and now the 47 sworn, because those are specific to the court services. We have two of those that are vacant, we've been backfilling with our extra higher annuants. Our East Bay Mud, we have one full-time, and then we have one position that we supply to East Bay Mud, all on grant funds from March through October. So there's three months that we don't have that three-quarter position out there. Hogan, the new contract we talked about today, that's done on overtime, the Forest Service is done on overtime. Maloney's is a contract position, we don't have the ADA JAG anymore. We have one person that works specifically with probation out of the AB 109 program. The state gives us one off-highway vehicle person that's full-time, and our marine safety, we have two. And the marine safety, the contribution, there's, the county matches some of the funds, but most of the funding comes from boating and waterways. Next slide. I'll let Jim do this one.
The point we've made with this slide is, if you look at the contract and grant positions, you're in a constant state of trying to balance the general public's needs with these contracted position needs. And that, what that involves is it's monthly, weekly, and sometimes daily management of staffing, and it does put some pressure on other departments, and I'm going to walk through that later when I talk about how our vacancies, how we respond to vacancies and backfilling positions. But the previous slide, you can see the balance of how many obligations we have, and the easy answer would be, let's not have all those obligations and just fund general patrol, the general public's patrol staffing. However, the counties become reliant upon the revenue generated from those contracts, grants, and revenues.
Right now, with our operations, as you can see, I have one undersheriff, one captain. You'll see in our request that we asked, I asked for another captain on the operation side because of what we've got coming up and the fact that when undersheriff Macedo was promoted, it left a hole in the captain's position, so now is he not only doing the captain's position, he's also doing, or the undersheriff's position, he's also doing the captain's positions. We have three lieutenants, and for those board members that weren't here years ago, at one point, step back to the captains, we had six captains at one point, and now we're down to two. I'd like to see the third. We have 10 sergeants, two of those are funded through grants, one being in the courts and one being in the boating and waterways. We have 11 corporals, one of those is funded out of the AB 109, and we have 27 deputies and 12 of those, almost half, are from grant positions. Current vacancies, right now, we have four. One's a corporal position, and then we have three other vacant positions. And I've got, the reason I put that five leaving before the year-end, we have one that's retiring out on the medical, we have one that is a sergeant that's going to be going down to another area, we have one that actually lives up in Butte County, he's going to go back up to Butte County, we have one going to Oakdale, and I'm drawing a blank on what the other one was, but we have five, and they'll all be gone by the end of the year. And that'll kind of play into my discussion later on about the recruit positions. Custody, we have a captain, a lieutenant, two correctional sergeants, four corporals, one sheriff services tech, six correctional technicians. The six correctional technicians, for those of you that have taken through the jail, those are the ones that work in those control booths that control all the doors in and out of the jail, again, trying to get those numbers up. Two cooks and five correctional officers, and three of those are funded out of AB 109. Two of those we're utilizing, one is with the work crew, and one of those is a female that we're starting now with the new program for the work crews.
Just going to, this is timed up, timed up, because it says 25 correctional officers.
Twenty, no, that's 25 correctional officers that we have.
That's what your question...
No, 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 that's just what we have right now. Those are current numbers. And then currently, we have five vacancies, one being a corporal and four correctional
I want to discuss, just real briefly, the impacts of employee turnover and if you take special note to the circular motion. When we have a vacancy that's created, specifically if it's created in an area where we are at bare minimum staffing or that involves a contract or a grant, we have to fill that staff, staffing position immediately. Based upon our seniority levels in our department, we have some very experienced folks and some very inexperienced folks, so it limits the ability to per se to transfer a brand-new deputy with less than a year or a year and a half on into an investigations position. It makes it difficult. So what happens is, when we make a transfer to fill a vacancy, it often causes two to three subsequent transfers. And what that actually looks like is, we have a sheriff services technician that drives a document, not physically, but electronically, through the human resources department, and it also goes to the auditor's office, and then sometimes it has to go out externally to another organization, especially if we're providing a service to them. All of those transfers place two and three people in a new position, and I think Supervisor Mills has mentioned this in the past, and I think Mr. Alt did as well. What happens when you, when you transfer people into positions, especially if they're specialized positions, they don't walk in the door that day and have all the experience they need. We often have to send them out to training. Training's expensive, we have to develop their expertise. If they don't have the training and expertise, it negatively affects how they're able to write a search warrant, testify in court, and it potentially interferes with the criminal justice system. So there's a cascading effect with every transfer, and especially when you're limited with positions. And this is going to tie into what we're trying to do with some succession planning here in the future, but it also has to deal significantly with retention. We also have to train and equip those people. There is a cost to equipping people, not everybody is the same size. We try to reutilize equipment, but the reality is, not everybody fits in the same-sized equipment. Then we have to start a recruitment through HR. That involves interviewing, background process, and again, those are all at a significant cost. There's hiring costs for the new employee to replace the vacancy, and that also requires equipping them and training them as well. So you can see, it's kind of a circle, and it's not a good circle. It's a problem that's been going on for a significant amount of time. However, you'll see towards the end of the presentation, we've had a lot of success in recruiting people and hiring people, and some of them are quality people, and if they're not, they don't successfully pass our training or probationary period, but we are in a pretty good place right now. The sheriff just noted about the correctional officer positions. We were full, fully staffed in the jail about two months ago, and I'll talk about known vacancy rate here shortly. Next slide. The sheriff's recruit program, so we've been sending a lot of folks to the academy, and it's been very successful. It allowed our staff, our staffing issues to recover. We had 11 go through the last academy, nine of which graduated, they're all in the FTO program. The previous group has all graduated from the program. We are really trying to emphasize hiring local people, however, that's not entirely possible, we have to hire the best candidate available. But this has been probably one of our strongest. The last two years, staff has done a great job of going out and recruiting people that didn't necessarily want to apply here. I don't want to slip off base in applying and what draws people here, that's probably a whole other study session, but I do want to let the board know that when you look at our starting salary, it is not very competitive with other agencies, especially when you start talking about additional signing bonuses. But our staff's done a great job of hiring people, both locally and bringing new people in. That coupled with an increase in our background investigators, we've really pumped a lot of people through the system, and we've got them now, and I think it's important to keep them, because if we can keep them, we can save, we can save some money. Next slide. I mentioned a vacancy rate. We know we have a known vacancy rate in the department of about eight to nine positions per year. This is a fairly recent trend, I would say the last three to five years. For those that may want to politicize this, this is not about any one single sheriff or any one single policy decision. This has a lot to do with a variety of factors. Obviously, I mentioned pay, but we are hiring and recruiting millennial individuals, and a lot of millennials are very interested in free time, a lack of a structured environment, a lack of a paramilitary environment, and they are also very tech-savvy, and also the economy is just doing well. There's other places to go to work, so there, I could be here for quite a while talking about what we're competing against, but the bottom line is, we have a known vacancy rate right now, about eight to nine employees per year. And that involves retirements, us removing people from their employment as well. This slide is important, and we've never shown you this slide before or this. It's important that we continue to recruit in all divisions. Unfortunately, we just lost a bailiff, he passed away, and we were having a really difficult time recruiting additional bailiffs, they really help us in court security. We've had some recent success using social media, we've got two people that are interested right now, which is good. But we have to recruit for all of those positions up there, and that also includes the interns and the recruits on the bottom. For those of you that have been on the board for a while, you'll recall we came to you and asked to institute an intern position. Took us a while to get that up and running, it's working well, we have a couple of them in the academy right now. We have another potential intern that we're likely going to be sending to the academy, so we're able to get a hold of them young, at a younger rate, kind of train them and fill them out through the organization before we invest that money in sending them to the academy. So that's working well. That coupled with a lengthy hiring process, and I don't want to underemphasize that... That coupled with the lengthy hiring process, and I don't want to underemphasize that, our hiring process right now is, it went from about six months, and we're able to get them done in about two to three months, which is good. And that, that's largely due to the addition of the background investigators. Next slide. The sheriff talked about some savings to the county. I'm going to address AB 443 specifically for you, Supervisor Toffinelli, in a moment. It's $500,000 that we receive per year. The Department of Boating and Waterways, the number the sheriff spoke to you was a little higher this particular year, because we're receiving a boat, and that was included in that. But that, those, these are just some, some notes of offsetting dollars that the sheriff's office brings in. The Friends of the Sheriff has agreed to donate $50,000 to the Bearcat, which we'll talk about later as well. I noted the revenue again. Radio and communications infrastructure is also going to come, come back up. We installed a new tower this year up in White Pines, and we're also getting ready to do two generators. I noted one, but there's, there's another generator, and we're going to talk about backup power today, too, for emergency communications. But we are making some good progress. Search and rescue volunteers, sheriff's office volunteers, and we'll also touch on the inmate work crew here in a moment. Okay, AB 443, this is for the, the public and for new board members, or those that may not be familiar. This was established for rural sheriffs with a county population of less than 200,000 in population. There have been times when we have utilized this money for purposes probably other than what it was intended for. Those days, I think, have passed us by, thankfully. But to be real specific about the intent of this law, it was specifically designed so that rural law enforcement agencies did not fall behind technology-wise. We've tried to maintain utilizing that for that intended purpose. Obviously, during the recession, all bets were off, and there were some other sheriffs that had, you know, some specific desires about utilizing that money. But I really want to make the point that the sheriff's office really wants to utilize that money for advanced technology purposes and/or safety purposes, so we don't fall behind. And Calaveras County is behind on many fronts, unfortunately, when it comes to technology. And I just don't think, from a safety standpoint, the sheriff's office can be, can be falling behind. We, we'll talk about some additional expenses to that, to that amount, and also, if the board wants to discuss this, we can talk about why we, why we hold on to that money so tightly, and why we want to save that money for, for a rainy day and not, not lower that, that special revenue fund to too low of a balance. Next slide. You're not going to, AB 443, you're not going to salaries or anything?
No. Replacement vehicle request. I, I won't go through this line by line, but it goes back to 2013, and I think I've said this before at board meetings, between 2008 and 2013, we didn't buy any vehicles. We did some leases, and after speaking with the auditor, leases are not a good idea. They're not a good idea for the public, and they're not a good idea for, for us. It's just, it's a big headache. Go ahead to the next slide. This is some of our older vehicles. These are vehicles that are all, I, I did this list today, or on Friday. So these are all vehicles that are out there on the roadways right now. We have a 2005 with 252, almost 253,000 miles, another '05 with 215, and '06, 279. As you can see, I won't name them all off. And you can see between seven and that 10, but just so you know, that 2010 vehicle was bought in 2013. It was a vehicle that was sitting there that we ended up purchasing. And then 14 and 15, and then in 2016, that one with 70,000 miles on it, that's actually a 2017 model that we purchased at the end of 2016. And as you can see, in three years, it's got 70,000 miles on it. So again, we're back to that. We need a five-year replacement plan, something I've come to the board before, and we've talked about. With the amount of vehicles and the amount of miles that we're driving, it should be about six vehicles a year. I've come to the board and said, "Look, if you do four vehicles a year, we can stay ahead of the game and not have vehicles that to, have 250, 2,000 or 279,000 miles." So it's a huge safety issue that we have this rotation. Yes, sir.
What about those four vehicles that we approved last year? They're on the road now?
We've got those. We're still having radio issues, and we'll talk about that later, too.
Okay.
Emergency patrol, we've got four marked patrols, sedans, inclusive of upfitting. It's 291,000. We have one marked patrol SUV to replace one that got crashed. We're going to end up kicking in 20,000 for that. The two marked diesel transport van, one of those is going to be paid for out of AB 109. The other one is a general fund, and I'll show you in the next slide, once we get there, a little bit about that transport van. And then we have two unmarked mobile communication command vehicles. Those are pulled out of AB 109. Go ahead to the next slide, please. Oh, we pulled that slide out. There's a picture, go back one, please. Oh, wait a minute, you're sorry, I'm sorry, go forward. Maybe it is in there. Go one more, just, yeah. Is it in there? Okay, right there. That's the van that our jail crew is out running around in. That is a 1999 half-ton van pulling a two-axle trailer with all of their equipment in it. It's got a little 350, or 351 Ford in it. It's overloaded, it's over miles, it's unsafe. That's the reason I'm asking for the jail van, not the AB 109 van, but the new jail van. And we also can utilize it for transporting, so it'll have three different compartments. So if we have a female that needs to go down to Tracy DVI, we don't have to drive the female down and then come back and get a male, and then take the male down. We can transport them at the same time. So it, it's upgrading the vehicle. It'll be a one-ton vehicle, and it'll be able to pull that trailer also. Go ahead and go back one for me. Okay. We're now doing the male and female work crews. As you see around campus, we quite often have our crews out there cleaning up. I won't tell you that they've killed, I think, about 22 rattlesnakes this year already. Quite, not just here, up at the airports, down at the Rock Creek landfill. So they're busy, busy not only cleaning out weeds, but they're getting rid of some rattlesnakes. Next slide. The inmate work crew, we've been expanding it. When Captain Ballard was over in the jail, he actually got us outfitted to run two full crews. We didn't have the staffing to run the full two crews. Now that we have the female work crew, it will be able to do that. I'm not sure that we're going to be using the females for doing the weed eating and the heavy, heavy stuff like the guys are doing, but they've been cleaning up around our campus up there, pulling weeds out. And it gives them time off. It gets them out of what I call the house. It gives them an opportunity to get some time off their sentence. Yes, Supervisor Mills?
Highway 26 has a litter control problem.
It does. There's a lot of places, and we can work on getting them out there for that. And actually, I got an email yesterday, kind of can't remember where it was, but they were looking for some help. And it's all public property, so that's what they're there for.
They've already been out on Milton Road.
Okay, have been out on Milton Road and 26, undersheriff's telling me. I don't know where they're at all the time, so, but when you see them out, say hi, don't stop, don't talk to them, don't offer them a beer, don't offer them a candy bar, just be glad that they're out there helping us out.
Sheriff, we could tell they're ours because they're not in orange anymore?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, because they were, they were running with CDCR too, too, too much, yeah.
You said, "Don't offer them anything."
Do not. Don't offer them anything.
Or give them cookies.
Yeah.
Are they going to be out cleaning Cosgrove Creek again this year?
Actually, Cosgrove Creek, I talked with CDCR and CCR, it's pretty much, they're the ones that have pulled all the weeds and stuff out of there. There's some fish and wildlife issues. CDCR already has the permit, so we're just going to let them do that. But what we're doing is, we're trying to make this program so that we can start charging private entities that want to utilize the system. So again, the sheriff's office will be bringing in some revenues. So it'll help. So, do you want to say anything more on that, Jim?
No.
Okay. Next slide. There you go. Average inmate work crews log approximately 40 combined hours of landscape per week, and that's with the five male inmates and one to two female inmates. They're everywhere. They're all over the county, if you see them out there running around. Over the past 11 months, the male work crew has logged 614 miles and over 328 hours of landscape-related work. So they're, they're actually doing quite a bit of work out there, and it's good. The public likes seeing them out there. And again, they like to get out of the house. The budget for the inmate work crew program provides the necessary personnel, protective equipment for the inmates, as well as essential landscaping tools. Again, we've gotten a lot of new equipment for that. It's just keeping, keeping them updated so that it's not old, so that we can continue with the program. Okay, this is, we're talking about utilizing these folks to bring some revenues into the county. The program will be partially self-funded, allowing expansion of the program into the future. Right now, I believe we have two female inmates. We opened it up to them, and they got outside and realized it was hot, and they decided they want to go back in the house. But it's still, there are females that want to get out there. So we're, our female population is down, knock on wood, it's a good thing, but it makes it a little more limited. We've also allowed them to do more work inside the jail, doing laundry and stuff like that, again, so that gives them credit. So we're, we're trying to give them the same opportunities. It's the Me Too movement. Next one. There you go. Next slide.
So these are our closing slides. I mentioned some good news earlier. The recruit hiring program that I mentioned's been very effective. I think Mr. Alt decided that we, he was not going to object to the remaining two going into the academy to send us to a full five going through the, the academy. Our behavioral health partnerships with Health and Human Services, I mentioned that it was award-winning last year. That, that program has been fantastic. We're expanding that program. We're diverting a lot of mental health, those suffering from crisis and mental health issues out of the jail, out of the emergency room at the hospital. That is going really well. We just are on the cusp of hiring two additional people to supplement that, and the deputies are very happy with that, because we're really diverting a lot of those calls. And they have some team, teammates with some expertise in the field that are able to help these 21, 22-year-old deputy sheriffs deal with, with people in crisis. We have some organized succession planning underway. This is incredibly important. I, in the interest of time, I'm not going to go into the, the last three or four sheriffs that I've worked with, but Sheriff DiVassilio is, has committed, and he's driving me to develop an organized succession plan underway, which involves training, training the replacements for the sheriff's administration. We have some retirements coming up, and this is something that has been lacking in recent history, and we really need to get some of these folks ready to go. There is a significant gap in our, in our staffing and experience levels. The inmate work crew is going well. Our marijuana enforcement team is very active. They are holding those accountable who are violating the current ban ordinance. They've increased their efficiency as it relates to speeding up their investigations. We are full, we are teamed up with Fishing Game full-time. We have Fishing Game Warden co-located in our, in our office, and albeit, he's responsible for three different counties. He's spending the bulk of his time here, and that, that team, teammate, or team partnership is going, going well. The vehicle replacement program, the sheriff has worked incredibly hard on this. For those of you that have been on the board for a while, you know, we were in a bad, bad way after the recession with not buying vehicles for all those years. So the sheriff working closely with the mechanic and some vendors, and specifically, the board deserves a lot of credit for, for helping us get our fleet back into shape. Emergency communications, I mentioned that they're expanding with the addition of the White Pines Tower. The, the board and the sheriff's office and the chief information officer and the local fire agencies, we're going to have to have a very serious conversation about emergency communications in the very near future, and we need to discuss long-term planning. I, I have some concerns about the PG&E rolling blackouts. I have some concerns about backup and support in our emergency communications, and that, unfortunately, while we've continued to make some really good progress, we've got a lot of work to do, and I think we, we need to move that towards the top of our priority list. Also, our use of technology is starting to really save time and staffing. The sheriff and I have a video that we're going to share with, share with some folks that really showed a new piece of technology, not only saving, potentially saving a life, but certainly making our officers more safe. And selfishly speaking, it made a very critical decision that I had to make a lot easier, because I was able to use some observations on a drone on whether to determine whether to send a SWAT team into a, to a subject who was, who was recently arrested for a homicide and was threatening to, to kill our staff. So the use of technology is starting to show some benefits for, for this office, as well as the public. Next slide. Okay, I'm going to let the sheriff take, this is the recap of our critical needs, and I believe this is the last slide, other than the questions slide. These are the areas where the CAO has made their recommendations, and we still have to work through some issues that we need to get some answers on as to where, whether or not the board is going to support us.
Back to the, the academy deputies. I understand CA, Al has agreed that we'll be able to continue to send those five deputies. I think there was a miscommunication. We thought that they were all limited terms, where they're not, they're extra, three of them are extra hired, two of them being limited term. The extra hires are people we bring in off the streets, so they're an extra hire, they're not, they're being paid a salary, but there's no medical benefits, there's no retirement and anything like that. The limited terms are positions that we typically take from either out of the jail or out of our internships that are being hired, that are hired and currently working for us. So they'll go into that program. The patrol cars and the inmate work vans, the patrol cars, I requested four patrol cars, like we had spoke about in the, a little earlier, and he reduced that down to two. And he agreed about the van. I'd like to see us stay with the four patrol cars, so that we don't start falling behind in, in our fleet again. The Bearcat was a position, if you remember the ones that were on the board last year, when they came, when the board came to us and said, "We need to take a 5% cut," we had put $200,000 on the table that the board was going to pay to help pay for this Bearcat. When we did the budget cuts, I pulled that $200,000 back out, and then I had asked for that $100,000 to be put back in. We've pulled it back out. We're going to fund that out of 443, trying again to save some money for the county. The captain's position, again, that's a position that we need. It's not something that I want. It's a position that we need. We have marijuana on the horizon. I have three areas that need to be supervised by a captain. I really need to have that position so that it, it starts bringing the department back to being whole, and again, as part of the succession plan for future people that come into this position, if for some reason I don't get reelected or beyond. It's something that needs to be done. The HNT phone is a $26,000 unit. The phone that we have right now, and HNT, for those that don't know, it's hostage negotiation team. And what that is, is that's a phone that we can actually, it's hooked to a cord, we can throw it through a window into a residence or wherever we need to throw it. They can't grab the phone and run off with it. It has video, it has audio, and we can make communication with the barricaded subject. The phone that we have now is, God, how old is that, Jim? I don't know, it's probably 20 years old. It's old. It needs to be replaced. To me, it's a safety issue for not only my hostage negotiation team, but for the suspect and anybody else around. Again, $26,000. The repeater site battery backup, it was $14,000. The CAO pulled that $14,000 out of the budget. To me, this is a no-brainer. The batteries that we have for backup at our repeater sites are old. They're decrepit, they need to be replaced. If our repeater sites go down, we have no generators at a couple of these sites. We have battery backup. If we don't have battery, we have no communications with our people. That's a huge issue. Again, compensation to the staff, let me jump down to number eight. The drone, again, the drone is a $17,000 unit. The drone that we're using right now is a drone that any private citizen can go in to buy. It's a couple of thousand dollars, about 12 inches by 12 inches, has a hammer on it. In order to view anything clearly, need to be about 15 feet off the ground. It's, if anybody flies a drone, they know. It's, it's, it's a good drone. It, again, helped undersheriff Macedo decide whether to send the SWAT team in on the subject that we had the other day. But the benefit of the drone that we're looking at, it's a commercial-grade drone, is something that is used by law enforcement. It has FLIR, which is, can detect hot or cold, so if it's up in the air, it zooms in. It's, it's an amazing unit. And what it- amazing unit. And what it does is it makes everybody in the area safer. It is utilized for numerous other issues. He just whispered in my ear, search and rescue. It's huge. We actually used one of our other drones up at search and rescue up in Bear Valley last year during the wintertime. This has FLIR. This can find a warm body to keep somebody from freezing to death. It's a very cost-effective piece of equipment. And then back up to the number seven, the compensate staff to minimize turnover. Again, this is an issue. I've been in this county, working, working here for almost 17 years now, and Captain, or undersheriff Macedo talked about staffing levels and the turnover. As we all know, he talked about the millennials, and we have all been in business, people leave. That's just the nature of, of any business. You know that. People leave the construction business all the time. So we're always going to have that turnover, but if we can give these people the compensation that they need, it might make them think twice about going down to Stockton and getting shot at, or down to Roseville to get shot at, as opposed to working up here where they make a little bit less money, but not a lot less money. It, it's going to help. So after that, you had a question, Dennis? You were leaning towards your mic?
Yeah. How many search and rescue runs have you done in the last year that would have been drone-capable?
Pretty much any search and rescue can be utilized with a drone, and we do numerous, not only in the wintertime, but in the summertime for lost hikers.
That's my point, is, is that this is an ongoing issue, literally involving 50 to 60 calls a year.
Yeah.
Out of your department.
Yeah.
With respect to the drone, night operations is a legitimate concern, or dark hour operations. We had one particular drowning case last year where we could not find a male that was in a very narrow ditch that was full of blackberry bushes. I made the decision to not send divers in there because I did not want to risk the life of those divers based upon the amount of time this person had been missing.
Water was high.
But it was, the water was incredibly high, and that drone could have flown right down the middle of that, that ditch that was covered with blackberry bushes and saved us probably two days, maybe three days' worth of searching with 10 to 20 searchers, Chinook helicopter from the National Guard. It, it really could have saved us some time and some money.
How much time do you think the battery backups are going to run, the 24 hours? Or, in other words, if we're going to be in a five-day shutdown potential, what's the point of having a batteries on lasting 24 hours?
Well, it, it depends on how much that repeater site gets utilized, on how long the batteries will last. So I can't give you a definite, yes, it's going to last for 24, it's going to last for 72 hours. I, I don't know. We do have a couple of sites that have battery backup. We also have generator, but we have to have somebody go out there and continually fuel the generators. Still, if we know that the power's going to be out for five days, and we have an area that doesn't have anything but those batteries, we can take a generator up there to at least charge those batteries. Without those batteries, we've got nothing because we can't hook the system up to just a generator. It's not, it's not wired for that.
And I noticed on your public meetings that you're spending a lot of time in D3.
I should hope to shall be.
Well, Marita's got us on a real short leash.
Is that it?
So, that, that's part, all of you have us all on a short leash. That's why we're looking for that extra patrol deputy. So we have that fifth beat, so those people aren't leaving your areas. All turn it any way you want, Gary.
I'm sure you will, Rick. I've known you as long as that.
Yes, you have.
Are we supposed to ask questions about political needs? How do you want to do?
Just all say yes, on the count of three.
It's not called CA no for a reason.
Okay.
Well, so I just wanted to have the board understand some of the dialogue between, between the sheriff and, and the undersheriff and I. I was working in the context of a status quo budget. So there was some theory where we put nothing but a status quo budget forward, which is ultimately what our directions were to the budget managers. And so what we were trying to do in the context of particularly this budget is be reasonable with not necessarily just sticking to status quo. I certainly won't say that I know better than the sheriff or the undersheriff of what is most important in their departments, but we focused, absolutely put a primary focus on, we said public safety. I said public safety in the introduction, but all of the things we did approve were driving right at officer safety. The EB and backing our officers was important to us, me. We did approve vehicles. Rick knows I, I support the, the vehicles. We, we can't possibly continually have people out running code three in vehicles that are 200,000 miles plus. We, we realize that isn't safe. But what we did approve, I, I mentioned the EB officer. We approved SWAT vests, patrol vests, tasers, SCBAs in the jail. I think there's, there is one van in, right, Rick?
Those, the one van you gave, there's, there's two vans. One's being paid for out of AB 109, and the, the one that I spoke to was the one out of the general fund.
So I, I, I think, for clarification on that one, I think in our view on, I was trying to pull it up here, but in OpenGov, I think there was two, and then there was an additional.
Yeah, it got messed up in OpenGov.
So, so I think in OpenGov, there reflected three, and so we didn't touch the AB 109 van. It was just, we split the general, the ones that were in the general van, general fund, right? That's my recollection.
Sorry. I believe we left, and there were two vans requested, and we left on the AB 109 van.
Right, and you took out the general fund van.
We added the general fund van.
And, and so my, my point has been through this in the context of us viewing it as a status quo budget. We, we went for the things that we felt, I felt really strongly supported our officers in the field. We, we went to the primary things that are equipment that they wear and use every day to focus on what our officers do on a daily basis. So, you know, beyond that, as I mentioned in the introduction, Rick and many of the department managers have an excellent plan. He lays it out well. I wish we had the, the funding to support everything that he's asked for. Certainly, you can choose to do that. He's got a clear plan that we could, we could tie funding to, but that which was already included, we felt very strongly that our officers deserve that support in the field, and our public deserves that when our officers respond. So, you know, beyond that, there certainly are needs, but I wanted to help you understand on how we, how me, when I made the decisions, we split the list on what we were going to put forward, and then leave up to, to this, this hearing process beyond that.
Yeah, the, the positions, the, the one deputy position and the captain's position, I was tying that to the new TOT tax money that was coming in. That's going to be coming in. We know it's coming. It's, those funds are, portion of those funds obviously come to the sheriff's office, and you can check with Rebecca, who is sitting right here. I know with a big grin on her face because she likes talking when I talk money. But it would be, there'd be enough money in that TOT tax to fund those two positions so there would not be a cost to the general fund as we know it now. So it was new, new money. So that's why I was trying to go for those positions at this point in time, so that it was not a hit to the general fund.
But TOT is general fund money.
No, you're right, it is, but it's not revenues that you have seen in the past. It's new revenues that are going to come in. So you haven't counted on it at this point, and I was kind of counting on it. Bet you weren't counting on it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does. Where's the shell game?
Yeah.
I, I'm sort of like, not clear, but let me, so we're going from two patrol cars to four. Is that what you said?
I put in my budget four.
Is that, have you agreed to that already, or is that something he's now asking us for another two?
No, we, we split the request in half. We did approve two patrol vehicles.
Okay.
And I don't care which, Rick and I have discussed this. I don't have a preference whether it's an F-150 or a car, or whatever they think is appropriate for their department. But in essence, we split the request in half. So they're asking for two additions.
As long as it's four-wheel drive and it comes up in D3, I'll be happy. The Bearcat...
Well, if I'm only getting two, I'm only going to buy sedans. They won't be able to make it up there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Listen to these guys. Yeah. Oh, but you don't need it there because you all just shovel your own roads.
We do. But we don't solve our own crime.
I thought for the Bearcat, $50,000 was coming from friends of the sheriff, so...
Correct. The other $100,000 to finish paying it off is going to come out of my 443 funds. So there's be, there's going to be no general fund contribution to the Bearcat at all.
So, but really, 443 money is sort of, in the essence,
Not even close.
In your department to utilize as you see fit, right?
Correct. It's, it's designed to keep us technology savvy. However, we can utilize it for some other things, and this is one thing that we're going to utilize it, so that, again, it's not a cost.
So the Bearcats...
Trying to save the county money, Marita.
Yeah, right. So the Bearcat's $150,000?
No, we've already paid the first patient. That, that Bearcat's about $343,000.
Okay, got it. I'm, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, I know, you're getting caught up. Yeah. We, we've already purchased, we've already given them some monies upfront. We owe about another hundred and, what is it? A hundred and...
$153,000.
$153,000.
Okay.
So I'm going to pull $3,000 out of my own pocket to put in there for that.
Thank you. The captain position, why do you need a captain as a supervisor versus a lieutenant?
Well, right now, I have, I have a captain in the jail that oversees, that oversees the jail with a lieutenant below him, and then two sergeants.
Right.
On the patrol side, I have no captain right now. I have undersheriff that's assuming the captain role, and he oversees Captain Ballard, who takes care of our OES side, our dispatch side, our vehicle purchases, and everything else that I can figure out for him to do. The other captain would be overseeing a lieutenant who watches over patrol staff, our marijuana program, and our investigation division.
So the third captain would be overseeing the patrol?
Patrol investigations and the marijuana program.
Okay. So what's the undersheriff doing?
The undersheriff is overseeing the jail, the patrol side, and Captain Ballard doing the OES, dispatch, and everything else.
Okay.
Sure.
Supervisor Calaway.
You know, you were getting rid of bars, but the start of the...
Yeah. I'm also dealing with all the litigation, all the Public Records Act requests, records management, sheriff services tech, the, the evidence room. I don't want to, I think that's enough. But part of this plan, I need to be able to train a captain in that captain's role, not where that captain is scattered out wearing 10 different hats and doesn't actually work with me, which is what's going on with the lieutenant now. I'm trying to get captains ready to go and lieutenants ready to go that haven't had the experiences such as the Sherman Tyne Herzog, the Leila Fowler, the Butte Fire. A lot of that stuff is going away. I've been through that. I've been through four sheriffs. When Sheriff Coons passed away, I had no time to work with Sheriff Devasilio before he took office. As you know, Sheriff Coons and Sheriff Downham didn't have the warmest of relationships, so there was not a, a smooth transition there. We're trying to recruit, we're trying to correct a long-reoccurring problem and establish, like most other sheriff's offices in the state, a very smooth, warm handoff and transition with well-trained staff.
Okay. I mean, I hear, I hear what you're saying. I guess the, sometimes the perception is, is that we get top-heavy.
Right, and that's why I was saying, at one point, we had six captains. We were definitely top-heavy back then. We're not. We're, having three is a need. It's something that would make the department run one heck of a lot smoother. Not that it's not running smooth, because I have some great people behind me, but it, it would make it a lot easier. And it would relieve undersheriff Macedo. Again, there's so much going on, especially with the new laws that are coming out, with the records requests acts, the use-of-force laws that have all come out. So there's a lot more going on than what there has been in the past. Every time the legislatures go into the board, or to their sessions, they enact more laws. It's just...
Makes you want to become a libertarian.
It does. I'm thinking about changing, Marita.
All right. Yeah, I know, you'd be happy. On the repeater site backup, would that not be a sharing thing you do with fire departments?
No.
So you tell, I mean, we had a meeting here not long ago, and we talked about that.
Okay, right now, let's go to that cell tower in White Pines. That was something that was donated by Red Cross. We've worked with CCWD. That's a site that if Fireshow chooses, they can attach to by working with CCWD. Rich, Chief Dickinson is sitting in the back of the room, and we're going to allow them to put a tower, or their, one of their repeaters down on our Ross Drive. So the county as a whole is working together to get these repeater sites up, but that repeat, those batteries are for our repeater. They're, they're specific to the sheriff's office. The road department, the fire department, the ambulance services, they're not using our repeaters because we're on different frequencies.
Okay. So we have to, now they have to pay for their own?
Well, I don't know what kind of system. I know Chief Dickinson is talking about putting in a generator up at the top of Ross Drive so that it powers their system when it goes down, but it will benefit us because us, we're letting him use our towers, and if I'm speaking out of turn, Rich, hit me in the head. They're, they will allow us to utilize their generator for Ross Drive. But there's other areas that we have repeater sites that do not have generators, like up on top of Fowler Peak, up off of top of Appaloosa. Please do.
Supervisor Calaway, we're, we're doing a, a pretty good job of cobbling a bunch of groups together to make things work. In the rest of the world, there's a general services agency with radio engineers and a chief engineer, and they have recurring, ongoing funding that comes into a fund that helps expand these radio communications projects and build them. We don't have that here in Calaveras County, so we're having to limp through this with the best partnerships we can. It's certainly not ideal, and it's certainly not industry standard. I think that's part of a broader discussion we all need to have, though, as it relates to the fire situation in the state, PG&E, and overall antiquated emergency radio communications infrastructure.
Well, I, I was just sort of going back to the study session that we had.
Yeah.
Regarding the towers and the repeaters and so forth. So I wasn't clear on why we weren't sharing that cost, and so...
Okay.
I'm not going to comment on compensating staff to minimize turnover. I think I've heard that for about 22 years.
And you have?
I have. And we're in negotiations now.
Yes, you are.
So, I mean, I think we've heard, we'll hear that from most of the departments. The other thing I guess I'm not clear on, Mr. Alt, are you recommending on these positions for the SO, it says not recommended, you're recommending that we fund these?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't address that when I spoke. Rick and I talked after I put CAOs recommended forward. I, I was under the impression at the time I made the decision that we had one position open and maybe two recruits coming out of the academy. So I thought we'd reached a point where we were a little bit more full in terms of our staffing. That not being the case, and the information that Rick presented here today, I wouldn't in any way suggest that we cut back on that. And, and had I digested that all in their presentation originally in the, in the here, in the department meeting, I probably wouldn't have made that reduction. We, in my opinion, and my recommendation would be that we continue to backstaff those and make sure that we have prepared recruits coming out of the academy to staff the open positions that they have.
But they have opens, they have open positions. Five people either will be going in, coming out. Those positions will be filled by those five.
Provided we, we put them back in. So there was originally five, and I think we reduced it to two, so there's actually a net of, of three.
So...
That I would suggest that we add back in.
Okay. So those would be five going into the academy.
Correct.
And so the one position on the position sheet where you recommend or don't, where you have not recommended for the captain, you've changed your mind to recommend, because that was the one I asked sheriff about. So you're recommending that one go back in, correct?
The limited, the limited hires in, on the back page, item one, two, and three that are deleted, the CCSO patrol vacant, LT deputy trainees, those are the ones that we remit.
So you want to put those back in?
Correct.
Those three?
Correct.
So...
Number 1, 2, 3 on page two.
That's $210,000.
Correct.
So, plus the captain?
I'm not making a suggestion on the captain.
Okay, got it.
Supporting the backlog of the recruits.
Got it. So it's just the three. So on the service tech 1, 2, 3, it's still a not recommend.
Correct.
And the deputy 1, 2, for marine safety, it's still a not recommend.
That's correct.
What you are recommending are the, are the three. What the sheriff is asking for...
Just so we're clear, it's not $210,000 to send five recruits to the academy.
No, we're not talking that.
Oh, okay.
Fully weighted salary. 69,498Ks for CCSO patrol. We're talking about three of those right now.
It's on the list I sent you this morning, Rick, that, that the board was going to get.
Right. I didn't look at the, there was, I didn't see any costs associated to that.
We have that cost that was inputted in OpenGov. It's the academy cost.
We're not talking...
We're not talking academy costs. We're talking about when they graduate. Putting those back in. These, their positions were eliminated. So you would've had five graduating, but only two positions open according, because you took three of them out, correct?
I see, I see what he's talking about.
That's what I'm understanding.
No, there's a cost that we pay to put them
Correct.
in salary to, to, through the academy. We had five. We had a pipeline of five. I reduced it to two. Now that I have more information or better understand the information, I would say, is that I support the five that they originally requested in the budget.
He thought that we were all fully staffed.
Yeah, but he's got fully weighted salary here.
Well, that is, that is what it's...
Can I address that real quick and I clear it up for everybody? The academy is not set to start until August. So they're gonna be paid at a certain rate for the six months while they're in the academy. That is the extra higher recruit and/or limited term. Upon graduation from the academy after the six months, then they will be paid a larger salary at deputy 1 with benefits.
Okay.
That what was entered in OpenGov by sheriff services technicians is accurate for the five, which is what I think you guys are discussing.
Understood.
There is an additional net effect in that in OpenGov, they did put in the academy cost for five recruits, and we reduced that to equal the number of recruits that we were putting forward. So I don't remember what the exact cost was, but I'm generally estimating it was about 10,000 per recruit.
Yeah, something like that.
It's, it's a nominal add back in to go with them. If, if those were approved, we have to pay for the cost of the academy as well.
Okay.
So the only...
These are five positions that we're trying to fill right now. Are they currently vacant, all five?
I have four vacant right now.
Four vacant.
And by the time that those guys graduate, I will be short. I will be out nine positions.
Okay.
So those five will fill, and I'll still have four vacant. Again, it's that attrition rate.
Just, just so for an overall understanding, those four vacant positions at this time were accumulating salary savings. So at that time, then this, this 69,498 could be backfilled with the salary savings from those four positions until they're filled, and then you go onto the regular.
Correct.
I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
I, I think those salary savings are going to be swept, most likely, here at the end of the budget, at the fiscal year. They'll be swept into the general fund. I did try very hard, and our staff has had a difficult time to be able to provide you with an estimated savings from our budget this year. But it's looking, I, I'm hesitant to put out a number because we have two payroll periods left, and those involve a homicide and an extensive search for a missing person. So they're probably gonna be high. But we are estimating and hoping right around 1 million dollars of returned savings from the sheriff's office budget alone. So that would more than cover a substantial amount of that. Plus, however, the, the CAO probably is utilizing that to balance the overall county budget. So I can't say the sheriff's office gets to speak for that money. That's up to the board.
But what you're talking to is the 18, 19 fiscal year on the savings. But working, working into our 19, 20 budget we're putting together here, at the time we're paying the 69,000, there's just four open vacant positions.
Yeah, you'll have, you'll have, you'll have salary savings.
During that time, they're not being paid because they aren't physically in that position.
Correct. But we're budgeting for next year. We wanna be crystal clear. This is
Understood.
This is about balancing for next year.
Okay. And what's in the budget now is not anticipated vacancies per se. So if we don't have a resignation, we have to plug salary savings into the budget next year. So whatever positions they have now are mapped over and up OpenGov and show as fully weighted salaries. So they're not programmed. If they have, however, a vacancy that they know about, and they anticipate filling at, say, three quarters of the way through the year, they'll have three quarters of the salary and a quarter already programmed into salary savings.
And there's salary savings on top of that because one of the guys that's gonna be leaving is a sergeant. People, the person that's gonna come back, Phil Hinn is gonna be a
Absolutely.
First step deputy. But again, that's next year.
Rita, are you done?
Yeah. I mean, I'd be willing to consider the captain and two more patrol cars at final budget, but not now.
Any questions?
Yeah, I wanna be clear on, on this presentation. And this slide of recap of critical needs.
Yep.
I wanna be crystal clear. These are critical needs, and these are not funded from the CAO's recommended budget this year. These would be additions to what you've already agreed to fund. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So there's no number for the two patrol cars and the work vans listed here? There's numbers for everything else. Do you have any numbers for those?
I think he's proposing two more patrol cars.
Two patrol cars and another van and one van.
If you put the two patrol cars and that one inmate work van on there, I'm gonna say you're...
I wanna get a clear picture of this amount, because
Right.
amounts that are here right now add up to 400,000 dollars.
Well, you're not adding my Bearcat money in there, are you?
No, I'm not, not that 100,000.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
No.
Okay, 93 for the van, and what's one of the 150s run?
291 divided by 4.
And the four, the four cars would be 292,000.
For the two?
For four.
For all four rooms, so divide that in half.
About 140,000 dollars.
Another 140,000, right. So you're looking at...
About 200 and...
About two and a quarter.
No, 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 no. You're 240 divided by 4.
No, by 2. Well, yeah, by 4, we tell you how much each one is.
I'm looking at page 389. You've got it listed here at 29162 for four of them.
Yes.
About 145.
Yeah, about 140, 145. Plus the 93.
For the van.
So you're looking at about 240,000 dollars for that.
Yeah.
240,000. So you're looking at 640,000 dollars to give him all his critical needs that he's talking about on this page that he asked for.
It's a nominal addition, but the cars, the vehicles, and outfitting the cars are separate line items. So there is still equipment, radio equipment, light bars, et cetera.
No, that's fully, that's fully weighted. Those cars, that's fully weighted.
I thought we had those on, some of the...
It is added on, but those numbers that he has is fully weighted for the vehicle. That's outfitted also.
So my question to the CAO is, other than the general fund reserve, where's that money gonna come from if we agree to it? Since you've presented your budget, where, where would that money be coming from?
Well, in the current budget, it would come from additional teeter transfers or reductions in other places.
Or general fund reserve. If we had a four-fish vote to say, pull that money out of the general fund reserve.
Or contingency teeter or...
We already have the minimum at 160 on your contingency on the proposed budget, so it can't come out of there. Unless we wanna dip deeper into that. I, I do not want to do that because we don't know forecasting what's gonna happen. So it would either have to come from reserve or reduction from other places, or you've already tapped down theoretically on your teeter funds to 900,000 dollars, and you're projecting a 1 million dollar income during the year as we progress into that. So we're barely at the bottom of teeter now. You take another 640,000 dollars out of it, you're gonna be down to less than around 200,000 dollars in that fund before you have your million dollar projection coming in during the year. So I'm just pointing out where, where this money would have to come from to, to vote if we go forward with all of his wish lists that he has in front of us. It's a significant amount of money. I'm not saying you don't need it. I, I'm just saying it's up to this board to decide and give direction to the CAO on where to find those funds. Because he's already has his recommended budget with the numbers forecasted out. And we would have to start going line item through line item on other departments and everywhere else to find the 640,000 dollars.
The only thing that I can suggest is what Supervisor Stoppage just said, the million dollars that we're gonna probably save in our budget this year. If that has not been swept, there's your money.
Have you accounted for that in, in your carryover cash fund?
According to, according to auditor, it's already been swept.
It's already been swept.
Yeah.
Well, swept is an interesting term. I mean, you could close the year.
It's been utilized. I'll agree with that, so.
It's been utilized.
Multiple meanings to it.
Like under the rug, out the door.
In trying to trend what we think the cash carry is going to be for the end of the year, we've projected what the impact with the remaining payrolls, what we're seeing with regards to trends for revenue that will be happening through now until June 30th, and also a burn down of expenditures that are gonna occur through June 30th. So all that's been taken into account. So any salary savings that is likely to occur, that's already been factored into that cash carry number. So any movement of that or anything, you're just reducing your cash carry amount, which means then we have to rely on a larger teeter transfer or a reduction of the general reserve.
Yeah, or general reserve. That's the only other places, other than hurting other departments, to find the money for this. And that's something that we have to deliberate on. It may not be on the preliminary budget. It could be the final budget to give time to CAO to find or come up with some suggestions to us or whatever. But this is something that we're gonna have to deliberate to find.
And I understand that. I wasn't asking you to tell me right now. You got like 30 minutes, and then you can tell me.
And I completely, I, I know you, and I know that. I'm just pointing out so everybody here and watching knows what's going on.
The only thing it sounds like, though, that we would need to make a decision on before we get to final budget are the deputy, the individuals going to the academy since it starts in August.
Uh, yeah.
So if, if we don't agree to that...
That and, and the vehicles, so that we can get those vehicles ordered. Otherwise, we're a year out from receiving vehicles.
Right now, what I read in the current CAO proposed budget, that there are two that are, that are in. So we're gonna add, we're talking about adding three. I'm not saying we are adding three. At that, with, with that, I think with the current four open positions, is there a way we could look at writing that down, knowing those four, sorry, those four positions are there, so that we have our salary savings already in line with the money we're spending on these people in the academy? And once they come out, bam, they get into the position, and, I mean, we're actually saving money right now with the four open positions.
Well, yeah, but that's what Rebecca was just saying, is that those monies have been utilized.
They wouldn't start until July 1st.
Right.
That's what I'm saying is, is July 1st, I'm showing it in the new, in the new budget. You know, I'm talking our new, next fiscal year is what we're talking about.
You'd have almost two months, because I don't think they start the academy till like Ju, August 25th. So you'd have two months of salary savings.
And there'll still be four people that are vacant positions that they're working for.
You may have more. You may have a couple of the other guys leave, so you might have more than that. I, I don't know.
So that's, that's where I'm working, is I can almost justify those, those, being in those areas while we have that salary savings on the other end during the 19, 20 fiscal year.
Right.
That's, that's all I have to say about that.
Sheriff, you, sorry, Sheriff, you had a, in the Bearcat, we originally had planned on splitting that, the board and your 443 funds.
Correct.
And then it got, things got exciting, and I think you decided to take the whole thing on yourself?
Right.
I mean, I regret that. I mean, we had a commitment to you on that. On the cars, you have, we have two in this budget. You asked for two more and an additional transport van, right?
Well, yes and no. I had originally put in my budget the four plus the van.
Two vans.
Well, one's a, one's an AB 109 van, so I won't even count that. So I had four vehicles and one van. And because of budgeting, the CAO left me with two, but pulled two vehicles and the van.
That's what you're asking for.
Correct.
Van seems to be one of those things that's going to save us money.
Well, and it is. And it's gonna last, I mean, jeez, the one we have now is in 1999. It's lasted a little while.
How many miles are on the van?
Uh, the van's got a little over 100,000 miles on it right now.
Thank you. Sorry. It's been a spirited discussion so far. Back in April of 2017, you remember, there was an ad hoc committee that was created by this board for the purpose of discussing your budget, your situation. And at that time, we said that in order to keep this fleet in somewhat of a stable condition, you needed to have four vehicles rotated every year.
Correct.
I'm not gonna step away from that because there is a definite cost to maintaining an older fleet. And it's not just the safety factor, it's the fleet maintenance factor.
Absolutely.
So I am thankful that the department has decided to go with the recommendation, because remember, I brought up the idea of why not pickup trucks? And our roads are better designed to be around pickup trucks. So, you know, I'm, I'm sticking to the idea that if we can't figure it out right now, but somewhere before the final budget, we find a way to keep those, keep the commitment to the four vehicles. Your, your fleet depends upon safe vehicles. And we figured it out then. I would like to hear reasoning why it doesn't, it's still not in place now.
And just to add a note to that, the sedans are more expensive than the Ford F-150s, and the expeditions are close to 10,000 dollars more. I think the, the sedans are four, $5,000 more, and the expeditions are almost 10,000 dollars, about 8,000 dollars more than the Ford F-150. So I picked a vehicle that works throughout the county and is cost-effective, so I'm doing my part, guys.
Okay. The other part, too, is that in CNEU, you had a position 3504, Deputy District Attorney. That position's been vacant for a while, if you remember. I'm looking at your position patrol for lists from this year, and I got the one from last year. So have we done anything with that?
That was originally part of our narcotics enforcement unit and the requirement that originally established with a grant that we had, a multi-agency unit. So we still have a partnership with, with the DA's office, but that had not been funded. The grant went away, so it would've rolled back to general fund dollars. We still have a marijuana enforcement prosecutor that assists us, that's dedicated, but that, you're correct in your, your observation.
Okay. Marine safety contributing 212,000 dollars last, this year into the system. Lake Tullik carrying over half of the calls for service, highest demand for service, most number of deaths and injuries per lake. We need to do something with that. And if, if we can finally put together a JPA with Tuolumne County, how long's it gonna take you to get a marine safety officer in there to cover the position if we can fund it?
I'll get it covered. You get it funded, I'll get it covered.
So it won't take you that long. You're gonna have a boat and everything?
Yeah, I, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get, we have a boat that's available that we can utilize. You gotta remember, I have two marine safety guys right now, and I have three boats.
Okay.
So I can utilize another person to fill that spot. That's not a problem.
Very appreciative of Copper Fire stepping up and providing a paramedic on Lake Tullik over the holiday season. I hope that that continues to work out, that the relationship...
Yeah, I talked to Joel down there, and that's, that's a done deal.
Okay. You've, you've made a known on page 389 about working mandatory overtime. Is there some way that you've calculated the cost of overtime based upon the number of open positions that you have or vacant positions?
Overtime fluctuates depending on how many guys you have on vacation, how many you have on sick leave, how many you have out on an IA.
Investigations.
Investigations, yeah. So that's a, that's a rolling ball, and you never know which direction it's gonna go. We could be not running any overtime for a couple of weeks, and all of a sudden, something happens. You have guys going on vacation, you have guys going to school, and then your overtime costs are gonna go up. To, to give you a hard number, I mean, we can give you a number of what we spent in overtime. I mean, that's, that's on the record.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to find a way eventually, and this may be more of a question to the CAO, is to find a way to correlate the cost of turnover and trying to figure out what is it costing HR to maintain an open position or to onboard an open position? What is it costing in, in moving people out of position or, because we do temporarily move them into, temporary and into a different position? So calculating all those numbers, I think, has, has to be in our heads when we're figuring out a budget. And it's just eventually, we're gonna have to do that. So, talking about your drone, the FLIR drone, that's a very cheap cost when you figure what benefit it can bring to the county and to bring to the safety of our citizens and the people that visit here.
Well...
So although it probably is something we're not gonna prove in the preliminary, I definitely would like to find a way for us to fund it in the final. We're not dealing with any meth labs here?
Not like we've had in years past. I mean, most of the meth that we're seeing coming into the county is just that. It's coming into the county. We're not running across the meth labs in the county.
Coming from Mexico or coming from Modesto or whatever.
Modesto, yeah. It's probably our biggest supplier.
Okay. You mentioned a cash carry over approximately 14, 413,000 from last fiscal year on page 392 on court security.
Captain, undersheriff, keep still calling the captain.
Supervisor Mills, we don't have the document you're referring to, but yes, we have a fund balance in court security via utilizing the annuance, although we've had to staff that with full-time people due to a lack of... that with full-time people due to a lack of annuities. So, that's shaving down, it's lowering. I'm concerned about that. The sheriff and I, right now, are working with other sheriffs in the State Sheriff's Association to try and get the leverage, or the legislature to move on that. Uh, that's something I would ask that you guys bring up at C S A C, uh, because right now, the state of California is underfunding bailiffs statewide, and they've been underfunding us for a while, but it's hit home with L A County and Orange County. Their numbers are astronomical, so Sheriff De Vassilio has been working with the sheriff of Orange County to try and elevate that up on the list of issues to be resolved.
And you and I agree, you and I have never talked about that, but it's gonna bite us if we don't pay attention to it here in the shorter term.
Sooner than later.
Okay. Just wanted, wanted in the record.
If you recall, we went to, we went to litigation over that issue with the new courthouse.
I don't know who built your book, but on page three-ninety-eight, it said you requested two people, and you wanted to add or delete twenty?
I would have to see what book you're referring to, Supervisor Mills. Do you have the Open Gov? Because if you have the initial entry for Open Gov, most of the questions you guys would have asked today, you would've seen our actual requests, so I'm a little confused. I may make a recommendation for housekeeping purposes.
Eventually, we'll, we'll get to where we can have that available to us.
I would like the board to see what our requests are, in, unredacted requests in the future.
What he's referring to is what you submitted to us in the first place in the budget meetings that we had. He's reading from your document.
Right.
As far as the removal of twenty positions, I, I don't know what that's referring to.
It's just backwards.
Okay.
Um, there's some discussion, I know you've brought this up, about, uh, mental health beds in the county.
Right.
Do you feel that's gonna be a separate discussion, and we're gonna need to have before final budget, or do you think that this can be worked out?
No, this is some, that's something that's probably not gonna happen until sometime after the fiscal year starts. I've been working with county council, um, and H H S to get mental health bed, um, brought into the sheriff's office, into the jail, but that, that's a discussion down the road.
Would that also have a eighty-seven impact?
No, 'cause that's, it's gonna be fully funded by the state. Basically, instead of them building new...
It's not federal, then?
Pardon me?
It's not, there's no federal money involved?
No.
Okay. All right. That's about all I have for now.
So, just, just a comment on what you see in the Schedule nines, on page fourteen is the first one for the Sheriff's Department. There, there, if you work, uh, left to right, you'll see what last year's budget was, what, well, actually, I'll, I'll skip seventeen, eighteen, but you'll see eighteen, nineteen actual data. You'll see the final budget for eighteen, nineteen. You'll see the department requested budget.
What page are you on?
Four thirteen. It's the first schedule on the Sheriff's Department budget.
Four thirteen, fourteen.
And then you'll see what I recommended. So, there, there isn't any redacted information. This is populated from, this is a pictorial view of what's in Open Gov.
Okay.
Those aren't those schedules, they haven't seen those yet. The narratives are what each department, uh, produced, and, uh, the undersheriff is correct that once they lock in their recommendation, and then, or their request, and then I lock in a recommendation, they don't see it until, until they get this paper copy. So, if they hadn't wound their way through every page of this, they wouldn't see that it, it's just a paper rendition of Open Gov.
Okay. Thank you. If, if, all right, I wanna jump in here really quick. We're coming up on four o'clock, I think we're gonna line out how we'll get through the rest of the day. Um, we'll continue to go through this. At five o'clock, I wanna stop, there's some people who spent their whole day to make a couple of comments on items that we're not gonna get to today, and I want them to have the opportunity to say their piece before we break, and put in their hours, and they deserve a chance at the microphone. And then we'll break when that's done, and we'll return tomorrow morning to continue. Does that work for everybody? Thank you. Yes. Okay. My one last thing has to do with the captain. Okay, and then after just one last thing, we're gonna take a five-minute bathroom break. I, I think that your, your thought process of a way to fund it is through T O T, if that would work, I would be in approval of wanting to go in that direction. I do understand the critical nature of that position, so I would, I would approve it based upon the fact that you can find the funding for it. All right, if it's all right with everybody, let's take a five-minute break, we'll come back at, uh, four oh one. Okay. All right, welcome back. Um, what we'll do is, we will wrap up any questions for the sheriff, and we'll go through the rest of our presentations, and we'll return tomorrow. Uh, we could dig deeper into, into the line items as we go. So, are there further questions for the sheriff? Public comment on this?
Are we gonna get any answers to the questions that we asked earlier?
Ma'am, where we go about this, is we will, you could, ask any questions you want, and then, and then we can ask the staff for rebuttal on those questions.
Good, 'cause I, I did ask a question, and I thought you, I understood you to say that you would be able to answer that question.
Said we may do a rebuttal.
Uh huh.
Yeah, we'll come up to the mic, and we'll take it on. Why don't you do that again, the next question? I'm sorry?
I didn't write for a question, yeah.
Very good. We'll get to it. Let us begin.
I've been attending the Planning Commission meetings, and one of the things they brought up was that, because of regulations from the state, that, um, they want to have electric cars, uh, including for the Sheriff's Department, and I was wondering how the Sheriff's Department feels about that.
Carrie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is about the sheriff.
I'm sorry, what?
This is about the sheriff's office.
Yes. Um, I was, uh, well aware that the sheriff has some needs, needless to say, and I commented to the board, it's probably been a year ago now, about the fact that City of Stockton was using majoring money there to fund the recruitment and hiring of police officers, which, of course, were gonna be paid at a much higher rate than the sheriff's officers here. And they had money available to them, they were even giving a sixty-six thousand dollar signing bonus, and paying for all the academy costs. So, I, I recognize that the sheriff needs some money, especially after listening to the presentations, and I just wanted to, uh, make you aware of some numbers. These are funds. Uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars, four-point-four million dollars, eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars, thirteen million, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and also ten million. Now, these are funds that presently are identified to go to Public Works for roadwork. And I know two members of the board here hear me every month at the council governments, Supervisor Mills, Supervisor Toffanelli, being very critical of non-delivery of projects. And those, for those members of the board who don't know, uh, uh, previous cycle to this last one, for C M A C, which is federal money, was seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. It was gonna lapse. The county couldn't or wouldn't use it. Last cycle was one-point-one million. Now, the county, again, was gonna let it lapse. Fortunately, the executive director of the council government was able to, um, find a way to, uh, loan those numbers, those amounts to other counties. And again, I, I'm on the case of Public Works, and it's not the new Public Works Director, 'cause the county's been through a lot of Public Works Directors recently, and it, and it's been building up for years. And one of the things that came to my mind after looking at the quarterly report, Caltrans now requires council government to submit a quarterly report on the status of their projects. The county has, the cog has twenty-one, um, projects on the overall work program. Ninety percent of the fiscal year has expired roughly.
Thank you very much, Gary.
I'm sorry.
That was thirty minutes.
Oh. Okay, well, my suggestion, then, if I could wrap it up...
No, I, I have to hold the line. We could, they're gonna have an open public comment, you were speaking about the sheriff's budget initially, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, tap these monies to fund the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comments on the sheriff's department budget? Okay, move on to the next set of, excuse me, any rebuttal or questions from the staff? Any of the questions? Can you add a question?
Uh, no. Uh, what are we gonna have rebuttals to?
Let's do it now, since we're talking about that. Sheriff, there were a couple of questions added your way, Al, there's a question headed your way on budget.
As far as the electric cars, it's a great idea, and I know that there's a couple of departments down in the valley that are now using electric cars, like Fremont. Problem is Fremont doesn't have roads like we do, they don't make a four-wheel-drive vehicle. Well, they do, they make a Tesla that's four-wheel-drive. I would love to have some Teslas up here, um, if you wanna do that for some of our staff. Um, I'm, I'm good with that, but as far as getting around in the snow, um, and most electric cars only run for about two-hundred-and-fifty, uh, miles a day, our guys are running somewhere between two-fifty and three-hundred miles a day. So, they would have to stop and charge the vehicle up, so it's not practical for us at this point in time.
We'll put a charging station at Frank's.
Yeah, I'm all for that.
Get the lunch.
I might get back out on the street. And I'm not sure, Aurora, what was the other question?
Other question had to do with, Ms. Weatherby, I believe it was, cannabis funds?
Uh, yeah, the Major C funds, the three-point-five million that was uncollected.
Oh, that's on you guys, not me.
Has it ever been collected? And if it hasn't been collected, why not? And what are you doing?
Chair, that's a, that's a pretty good question. She needs to come to the microphone. Yeah, I apologize, she needed to come to the microphone. She did that, you actually did that in your original statement, so I think we got it on the record.
That was on her original statement. Yeah, and the answer is no, it has not been collected yet. Um, we are coordinating with council and the administrative office to look at, um, collection, um, possibilities, but it's still being reviewed.
Thank you.
I believe there are just a few cases where people did voluntarily come in and get themselves up to date on it, but it's an insignificant part when it comes to the total...
It's very insignificant.
When it comes to the total number.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to the next set of presentations. Is the library or the district attorney going next? District attorney's deferring to librarian, always a safe bet.
We have some young constituents that have been waiting all day for this, so...
We do, we do, thank you so much. I really appreciate your...
They have been awful quiet.
They've been wonderful, thank you. Um, yeah, I do have a multimedia presentation, but it's people, not electronic media. So, I just wanna very, I wanna tell you something, and then I wanna ask for, to change something that the C A O, um, recommended. He and I have talked about this, and he's okay with it, 'cause it's not really my, my style to, to be adversarial in any way, and I'm not being, um, but in last, this fiscal year that we're in now, I had actually gone to, to C A O Lutz and asked for the position that I'm putting forward now. He suggested that we do a one-year, uh, test of this position, which is now a limited-term position, and ask the friends of the library to fund it, which they did. So, we've had a, almost a full calendar year, uh, of this library assistant one position, whose mandate is to offer STEAM support and educational services to our children and our families. I've come to you before and reported on this. Um, we have an ongoing program on Wednesday, morning and afternoon in San Andreas. We have had intermittent programming in the Copperopolis branch, and we started in May to have regular programming in the Valley Springs, uh, branch library after school. Um, we have served roughly, uh, seven-hundred, I'm, I'm sorry, nine-hundred-and-seventy-two children through the, through the month of May with this, with these, um, services and programs. Um, I think that's great success, and in my, uh, plans for this year, in my goals that I gave to you, I have suggested that I would like to expand to two more sites with ongoing program. One of those sites is West Point. Uh, in West Point, we also have our library branch at the school, so it's very simple for kids to come over if they're in the after-school program and participate in this, and I would love to serve this underserved area. We have a lot of intermittent requests. Copperopolis has been very proactive in asking us to come for, um, short, shorter-term projects. Angel's Camp, I was able to do a demonstration there of our three-D printer a couple of Saturdays ago, and there was huge interest in that. Um, the scouts and other groups were saying, oh, can we do this in, in our, in our branch? So, there's a lot of need, um, and so I had as a goal to expand, uh, this program into four sites. Um, because of that, I asked for moving this limited-term position to a permanent position, but rather than eighteen hours, I had asked for twenty-four. And the reason I did is because my part-time people basically work for six hours, and that would give us four days, which would give us another day to move around and, and travel. However, um, when you go, when you reach the twenty hours, you have to offer, well, you want to offer, but you are mandated to offer, uh, full health benefits. And so that made this position, um, as you can see on the C A O's, uh, excellent summary, thirty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. If you, I, I'd like you to hear from some of the participants, and also from the library commission, um, a commissioner is here to recommend this, but if you would just put into your minds that I am willing and would be very happy to put forth, um, an eighteen-hour position, which would just give me the three days, but it would cut this figure to about fourteen thousand dollars. So, I'm suggesting that, it's not my ideal proposal to you, but I realize that thirty-six five on my little budget is a lot of money. So, I'd like to invite, first of all, Alison Wright, who is a library commissioner appointed by you, to, um, give the perspective of the commission.
We are blessed to have Nancy Giddens as our librarian, she is amazing. We had a chance, the entire commission, a couple weeks ago, toured all of the county library facilities, to see what they were doing with the facilities, the resources they have. Awesome. We got to see Marina there, too. Just what our county is doing in the librarian resources, what she's added in the way of services is phenomenal. Everything that she does is successful, she keeps bringing in resources on pennies when she needs dollars, and she makes us all want to give more and help our kids more. Calaveras is a challenged county, I love it here, since I've been here. Anything we can do for our kids, they're you in a couple of years, we have to help them grow. So, if you want to really see the commission in action, you should come to our commission meetings. We've had some of you visit us before, but we're on the fourth Monday of every month, we start at eight-thirty in the library. Well worth attending, and you would get a really good feeling for how hard the library works and what we do for the community. So, I would tell you, with the amazing results that Nancy achieves, with all of her programs and the way she squeezes that dollar into these amazing, successful ventures, please say yes to whatever she wants to do. This is such a nominal amount, just say yes. And here is the reason that we're doing this. This is our research. This is, um, a family that's participated in our program, Come Come, uh, in San Andreas since its beginning, so they would just like to share a little bit with you.
Hello, I'm Annette Packenger, and these are my four. Uh, we homeschool, so we don't have the resources that the library has made available to us with the position that she's asking for, to do the STEM, or STEAM, as they call it, um, to teach science and things like that. Standing for the parents who weren't able to come today, some of them on vacation, some of them gone, I would like to say, as a parent, it has been wonderful. My children have learned a lot of things, and the young man that's doing the program has been fantastic with dealing with all of the different children that come to the program, because we're, they're, during the daytime when we come, it's homeschoolers. In the afternoon, it's the students of the local schools. And I understand from some of the friends my children have that go to that, they are also enjoying it. So, I'm going to let my daughter speak first. She has prepared a speech for you.
Thanks to our STEAM leader, we have learned many important things about STEAM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. He has taught us about science using items found in everyday life. For example, he taught us about potential and kinetic energy using the matchbox cars. This made potential and kinetic energy interesting and simple to understand. He also combined technology and engineering when he asked us to make miniature vehicles. Everyone had to use engineering in order to make the fastest car. Some used technology to motorize their vehicles. He also taught us about art when he allowed us to be creative or decorate our projects. Some miniature vehicles were decorated. Mine, for example, was decorated as a race car. Last but not least, Mr. Hawkins taught us math. We had to use math in order for our timeline of creation to be accurate. We also used math when we made our simple, yet effective model of planetary distance. In addition to STEAM, our leader has also taught us how to take notes, be good sports, lead, and be kind. Without him, we, there would be many things that we would not know. Thank you.
Okay. Um, my name is Joseph Packenger, and, um, I would just like to say, um, Mr. Alt, you have a really great haircut. But, um, this STEAM has, STEAM program has allowed not only my family and I to have fun while learning, but also it allows for other families to have fun and for their children to learn. And it really helps when you are homeschooled or public schooled because once, um, when you get into math class, or math, science, and technology ma- class, sorry, um, you will excel in those classes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's quite a presentation.
Yes, aren't they great? And we have about twenty of children like that every Wednesday at the, at the library. If you want to come by and see us, it's great fun. In the afternoon after-school programs, we have usually about ten. Um, so I really feel that during this, this year, we have proven the benefit of this program to our county. Um, and I would love to do more and in other locations. So I hope that you will consider. I really will be happy to reduce this to eighteen hours, which makes it much more affordable, if you can add, um, this small paltry sum of fourteen thousand and four dollars to my requested budget. Thank you.
Any questions?
Nancy?
Nancy.
I, I just have a quick question for you.
Sure.
Of all, all the, the Friends of the Library branches that we have, including the main one here, um, how much of your budget do we contribute?
A good question. Last year, the Friends of the Library gave a very significant donation to the library, about fifty-five thousand dollars. But that is because they had the Calaveras Community Foundation grant of almost eight thousand and the, the, um, end of a large donation that we had, that a, a, a community member passed through the Friends. So we had about twenty-two thousand there. So about thirty thousand of that was, was, um, was funded by others. So on average, I would say about twenty-five thousand dollars is what they, what they normally give, twenty-five to thirty. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the next question is, on this Library Assistant, is this the sixty-five forty-one L or the sixty-five forty-two L position? Is this the Library Assistant One or Assistant Two?
Library Assistant One.
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 Okay.
The Library Assistant Two is our First Five employee that's funded by the federal grant from First Five.
Okay, so what you're asking for then would be the Assistant One?
Yes, Assistant One.
Okay. I just wanted some clarity there, because you had two.
Yes. Anyone else?
Any other questions? So you need fourteen thousand and four dollars more added to make this thing reality?
Yes, for eighteen, an eighteen-hour position. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll kick in the floor.
Oh, thank you.
Great. Any public comment on this item?
Good job. Good job. You have come so tall, Alice, in that measure. Um, Marty Crane, I just wanted to say that, um, when we invest in our people, we can't go wrong. And this is investing in the future of our people. So, um, I know it's fourteen thousand. I know what that could buy in the Sheriff's Department. I know what that could buy in, in the District Attorney's Office. I know what that could buy in the nonprofit world. But, um, I just want to say, um, on behalf of all, for twenty, twenty-one years, all the people that got involved with the, um, annual melodrama that raised money for our libraries. Um, this is the first year we weren't able to do it, but I understand we might be bringing it back. Um, but anyway, it's, it's just a wonderful thing. So please, invest in our children. This is what it looks like. Thank you.
Great. Any other public comment on this? Have us, no more questions from the board? Uh, we will take this up when we go line by line. And, uh, I want to thank the Packenger kids. You guys are very well behaved for a very long day. And I hope you learned a little bit from homeschoolers, uh, how your government works. So thank you very much. Great, great job.
And thank, thank you for sitting there so patiently. Uh, you, you did very well. You know, I could not hold my daughter down for more than five minutes in that position, so you, very, very well done.
Thank you.
Echo, good job. Good job, guys. And girls.
Very well. Well, thank you guys very much. Great presentation. Barbara, I think you're up. District Attorney's Office.
I'm just happy to let them go first, maybe get you guys in a better mood. Barbara Yuke, District Attorney. I'm actually not here to ask for money. I know Maria's probably about to fall over. Well, what I'm asking for is not to be cut. So I'm kind of turning that around. Um, I, I don't know if you guys have the same numbers as I do, but, um, I pulled this offline. It would be page one-seventy-three of the budget book. Uh, it should be page two of Department Thirty's Schedule Nine. Um, the first-line item I want to address is the... One-seventy-three would be page two of my Schedule Nine for Department Thirty. If we have the same numbers. It's okay. Fifty-two eighty-nine expert testimony. I only have a couple of areas that I want to address and ask that they not be cut. The budget we had for this year was fifty-two thousand dollars. Traditionally, that line item has been budgeted at about twenty-five thousand dollars. This is for all our expert, um, testimony, witness fees, um, any consultations, um, that we need. And we, we, we really think this more as a litigation expense line, not just for expert testimony. Um, we've, um, I don't know how many years we, we budgeted it at twenty-five thousand dollars, but it's, it was a number of years. And if we don't use it for that year because, um, a trial resolves or there is a stipulation to what the expert would testify to, or the case gets continued, um, to the next fiscal year, um, we just have been rolling over those funds. We do not spend them. We, um, preserve them specifically as litigation expenses. Um, I believe County Council does something very similar with, um, their budget for... No, you don't anymore? Okay. So, well, we do. So, uh, it got bumped up to fifty-two thousand dollars last year because of, um, the forensic accounting services, um, contract, um, that we wanted to be able to utilize if we had such a case with, um, law enforcement coming forward. We didn't actually have any cases this last year, so, um, we have not spent that money. So that's where the fifty-two thousand comes from. It's twenty-five thousand dollars for general litigation expenses and twenty-seven thousand for, um, specifically, um, forensic accounting services. Now, the, the, the C A recommendation is to cut that down to twenty thousand dollars. Uh, my request is that not be cut. Um, we did not spend, um, very much of the expert line this fiscal year, but that is because we did have a trial that we anticipated going, um, a couple of months ago that got continued. We also had, um, a couple of trials resolved. The year-to-date is actually, I think, about two or three thousand dollars because we did have, um, a trial go out last month that we did, um, require the use of an expert. So, um, the reason that I do want to have a reasonable amount funded in that line, I do believe that twenty thousand is too low, um, just for the general litigation expenses, is, um, you know, based on our experience, based on my experience over the years, that the twenty-five thousand dollars is a good amount to plan for and not have to, um, come to the board every time we need something in a case. Um, if you imagine what that would look like, we'd have to prepare a board packet, um, for a particular case, revealing very publicly the facts of the case and what our strategy is, um, and have a four-fifth vote on whether or not, um, you will allow us to go forward on any particular case. Um, and I, I think that that is problematic for a number of reasons. One is just the staff time involved in preparing the board packet and the timing of such board packet. Sometimes we require an expert in the middle of trials, not something that we know is coming. Um, and so that would just be completely unfeasible to have that kind of delay. But regardless, um, there, there's not, um, without resources and staff time to bring a board packet forward, um, you know, hopefully get the four-fifth vote to approve us to, to have these funds for the use of the expert, to retain the expert. And then the case might not go forward for one reason or another. Either it's a plea, or there is a motion to continue for some reason, or maybe the defense stipulates to what the expert would say. So it's, it's incredibly wasteful to have to come to the board to request funds for an expert for any particular case, and besides which, it would then all be very public. The other thing is, because it would require, um, your vote, it, um, it abdicates my constitutional authority to decide on what cases we go forward on. And I don't know that any of you really feel would want to be in that position, that you're making those decisions, that it's really in my purview to make. So, um, we do request that, um, we are able to maintain the reasonable amount in the expert line item. The twenty-seven thousand, that was the bump last year, um, that is a different issue. That is specifically for the forensic accounting services. Um, I know that, um, that some of the, the marijuana-esque funding, um, has been put aside. Not all of it, but maybe is being carved out for, um, a separate debate. Um, however, that particular piece of funding goes with supporting a ban, supporting a regulation, um, supporting whatever's going to be happening in the county. Um, during my meeting with the C A O's office about our line items, um, I expressed that I am completely fine with giving up that twenty-seven thousand dollars if, um, the Sheriff's Office got the position that they were requesting for the forensic accountant proper. Um, I don't believe that has happened. So since there is not the forensic accountant position being established, I would request that the twenty-seven thousand dollars remain in that line item and not be cut. Um, the other, the other reason, um, something I just want to throw out there as far as the, the basic twenty-five thousand dollars that I'm requesting remain in, um, that line is because it really disadvantages the people, um, in, in our litigation practice with the criminal cases because the defense, indigent defense, um, they have a, basically, a blank check. I know some of you have heard me say that in the past, but they do. They have a blank check as far as, um, experts go. It's something that they submit to the court. Only the court can say yes or no. There is no debating it. Um, the court either approves it or not approves it. But the court says yes, then the county is stuck with the bill. They don't have to live within a budget. It's a blank check. And, um, they don't have to have any public vetting of whether or not it's an appropriate use of funds. And they are not coming to you asking whether or not they can spend these funds. It gets decided elsewhere, and then the county is stuck with the bill. I think my department does a very good job of living within its budget. We've historically lived within the twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and if, like I said, if we don't use it, um, then we don't spend it. So I'd request that that budget not, that budget line not be cut. Um, going to the next line item that I'm asking not be cut is, um, training, our training budget. And, um, the other line would be office expenses. So it's two thousand dollars out of training and one thousand dollars out of office expense. It's a total of three thousand dollars that I'm requesting not be cut. And I'm putting it in those terms because we had, um, ten thousand dollars of overtime that we budgeted last year that we did not use. I cut that down to five thousand dollars. I moved the five thousand dollars over to services and supplies. Two thousand into training and one thousand dollars into, um, the office expense lines. To match the reality of where we are this year, we were short in training and we were short in office expense. So while it looks like, um, it was a request that was not granted, really, I think it's better thought of as, um, a cut because of the status quo budgeting. And if you look at the bottom line, my services and supplies, um, line is being cut. Now, the training, I know it looks like it's a sufficient amount, but what, um, you can't see when you're just looking at the, um, eight thousand dollars that's being recommended, is that six thousand dollars is earmarked by CCP. That is CCP money. It is worked for one specific class, for certain of my deputies, and it is also for, um, restorative justice training for the, um, position, um, that is CCP, partially CCP, CCP-funded. So when you take that six thousand dollars out, that leaves me two thousand dollars for training of my entire staff. That's for all my deputies and for my non-sworn investigators because the non-sworn classes are not reimbursable by post. So, um, you know, before I decided to request that that line not be cut, um, and, um, I did want to do a reality check, and I checked the County Council to see if, if four thousand dollars, which is what I am essentially requesting for generalized training, um, was reasonable. And after, um, an email exchange with County Council, I do believe that the four thousand dollars I'm requesting is more than reasonable for the training of my entire staff. Um, so I'm requesting, once again, that, that, um, two thousand dollars not be cut and with the office expenses, that that one thousand dollars also not be cut. So those are my requests on Department Thirty.
Questions?
Barbara, I'm just trying to be clear on the training. Um, you requested ten.
Correct.
Of the ten, six thousand is CCP-funded.
That's correct.
So that means the recommended is... It would be, you're needing four. Al, what is it that I'm missing here? That, um, because it says eight thousand of which...
So she requested, she requested ten. We, our budget directions were status quo, and in many cases, we tried to hold that. So in this particular item, she had eight the year before. She requested ten, and we put it back down to status quo for a reduction of two thousand. What, what's behind that number? I don't know that. That's what Barbara's explaining, uh, there. But frankly, I just moved it back down to status quo in that particular case.
Okay.
And we did that. We, we used that as a standard in many budgets to just, particularly where it was unexpended.
Okay, that's fine.
Same thing on office expense. Status quo from sixteen last year. She was requesting seventeen. And you went status quo of sixteen in your recommendation. Line item fifty-two forty-one.
That's all right. I mean, yeah, I'll finish when Gary does.
No, I'm sorry, Marie. I'm just along the lines of status quo, so. Go ahead.
So I guess if you could look at that, because if six thousand of the eight comes from...
CCP.
A designated fund, then we'd only be talking...
Two thousand dollars.
Two, yeah, two thousand from general fund.
Right. Which was not enough this year. We had to pull from other lines. So the CCP, um, has agreed to fund the sentencing class, which is, it's an expensive class, but it's a felony sentencing class. It's only for certain of my deputies at a certain level, and we can't all go at the same time. One year, I was able to send, send three people, which was great. But it's a once-a-year class, and so if I can't send people to that class, we don't use that money. So when you're looking at that eight thousand dollars that's being recommended, it's really only two thousand dollars of the general fund money.
I'll let the C A O work out.
Well, so a gap in our process this year was, and we talked about the, the timeline, and Barbara was one of the department heads that asked this on the way out of the department head meeting. Well, I have a follow-up. So I know what I'm, what's being recommended versus what I request. So the opportunity she's had to speak here today, she didn't have that opportunity in our process. And I, and I've talked to the department heads about that. That certainly is a gap. Uh, but as a standard, when we went through the budgets, I, um, I certainly had help. I don't want to infer that I did all the work. But as I was putting my recommended budget forward, we, we did this in many of the budgets. We stayed as close to status quo as we could. We looked back particularly where there were areas, and, and you can see the tracking of line items. If they were unexpended, and they were unexpended in seventeen and eighteen, we didn't stay at a particular line item. Now, I probably would have rethought to a certain extent cutting expert witness, but even if you track the expenditures, even in that case, twenty-five thousand, at least in the history we can see, hadn't been spent either.
Actually, none year-to-date.
I'm sorry?
Actually, none on that line item.
Year-to-date, in the current...
Well, we do have, we have an invoice coming.
It's three, three or four thousand according to...
So, I think we understand that. I'm just, fine. You can figure that out. I just want to make sure I was clear on the difference between the 8 and the 6 and the 2.
Well, from a general fund perspective, this is the request. Whatever other revenues come in and how those are used are already incorporated into the budget. They're not subtracted out here unless they're reflected as there's a revenue source offsetting that. So there's opportunities for that to be documented, but we can't necessarily see that if there's some other help on that particular line.
Got it. Barbara, on the expert testimony, it says 52. We cut it to 20. Are you saying 25 in that column? Or 25 plus the 27? I wasn't.
The 52 comes from 25 that we have historically budgeted, and the 27 that was specifically for the forensic accounting services. And we did not use any of that. We do have an invoice coming against the 25, and we really would have spent all of that this year had it not been for two trials that got put over. So we are currently looking at, if they go, spending all of that this coming year. I can't predict 100% that they are going to go, but that is our intention, and we have to be prepared. You know, maybe something will happen, and we don't spend that money. That's, you know, that's kind of what tends to happen, and we don't dip into that, if you will, because that is very specifically for the litigation expenses.
I have something else, but let Gary go. Gary?
No, I was, I just wanted to make sure that we were status quo.
And for the $6,000, that CCP money, that is confusing when you look at our training budget. It looks, if you just think about $8,000, that's probably sufficient for my whole staff, but when you look at that number, you have to realize it's not really $8,000. It's really only 2. Yeah, and we went over it this year. We had to move some line items around. I was just trying to match reality. And the same with office expense. We went over, and so our year-to-date's $18,546, and we only budgeted 16, so we're going to have to move some lines around that. So that's why we upped it to the 17. And I suppose what I could have done is I could have just left the $10,000 in overtime and moved it later, but I didn't. I spread it around the line so we could try to really have, you know, the clear budgeting, and then $3,000 was cut.
Okay, we like to cut. I'm just sort of throwing this out. The district attorney brought up the thought that if she needs an expert testimony, and she needs, and she's over budget or at budget, and then she has to come to the board to allocate more money, is there a system in place where the CAO can authorize that money without, and maybe this isn't an example, but this might be a good example, the CAO can grant that without it having to come to the board, as long as bottom line, as she's within her budget?
Yes, within the line items that are already appropriated. Probably the bigger challenge for the district attorney would be here is that she doesn't, you know, if you look at the line items, she's budgeted pretty tight to what her expenditures are in most of them, so, and she wouldn't have a lot of room to be able to do that if she needed $30,000. She can't, she can't put money in a line item that she doesn't already have in a neighbor in line item here on this schedule.
So she cannot move the money?
She can't, but she can't, she can't do it if she doesn't have the money. So if a budget's already expanded, she can only take
Oh, yeah.
From each of the line items where she has money there.
Okay, so is there a way, doesn't, it's just future discussion, that the CAO can have authority under circumstances maybe like this? Yes?
Well, go ahead. Government code does not give the board the authority to delegate that authority. So that's the law that we have to follow.
So skirting the law, just staying on this side of it.
What's the deal?
So, so the bigger, so the bigger issue is, if that all happened, and we have seen where there has been a skirting historically, depending on who is where. And when the bill comes to me, I have no authority to pay the bill. So then she could have entered, engaged into expert testimony. I get an invoice to pay that, and I can't pay it. So at that point, it would have to go to the board in order for me to have authority to cut a check. So the authority, the government code, the Budget Act does not allow the board to delegate that authority. There are certain things you can, so as long as there is appropriations within the budget, then she can move money between line items. But if it's not there, you can't, you can't invent the appropriations.
So, but if we have an emergency, the CAO can spend money?
But the emergency is also defined per code, and there is a difference between urgency and emergency. So in this case, there is no code that allows for urgency. It only allows for an actual declared emergency. So if there was a true declared emergency, which generally it's not a case that causes the emergency, it's more of a natural issue or some sort of what we've all been experiencing, then at that point, we can go ahead and pay what we need to pay. The CAO would have to sign off on that, and then they bring it for blessing to the board after the fact at the next available point. But urgency is not an emergency per code.
There's no wiggle room?
No.
That we could say you have authority up to $20,000
New.
In a budget year?
No. I'd love that authority for me, but I don't have that.
No.
Every department would love that authority.
No, I just wanted to clarify that. I mean, the distinction here is whether the board has already given authority within the budget or not. As Rebecca Callen indicated, if the board has already allocated the funds, the DA and, you know, through the CA, they have the ability to move funds that have been allocated to her budget to cover things that are shortfalls as needed, because those funds have already been allocated to that budget. The issue that we have here is if the board doesn't, for instance, if they cut it to, hypothetically speaking, you completely blow your budget and there's no funds in any line item at all, then obviously, nobody other than the board would be able to allocate additional funds to cover a contractor, cover those expenses, without it coming back to the board. But I would imagine that particularly with a case, and if you're seeing that a line item is starting to get depleted, that there would be sufficient time to either move funds around to cover any invoice and/or come to the board long in advance of a case going to trial to cover anticipated expenses for expert fees, I would imagine.
So, for example, at this point, this year, there's $614,000 remaining appropriated in this budget that have yet to be extended.
Barbara, are these expert witnesses generally under contract? Do you sign a contract with them?
Am I supposed to say yes for the contract? They invoice us and
They invoice us, so there's no contract.
Yeah, so, yeah. And it can be things, like every time we, if we have a homicide and we have to have the pathologist come, there's a fee that goes with that. You know, if we have, Dr. Akiza is our expert that we use for child sexual assault accommodation syndrome, you know, and so when these trials go and we need an expert, it's very important. It's important for proving our case beyond a reasonable doubt, and we can't say, oh, come, and then I'll go to the board and ask that they pay you. You know, we can't, we can't do that. And we can't be coming beforehand, because that's a big, huge waste of time, because anything can happen with a case, or things can get put over. And I'm telling you that if our trials had gone this year the way we had planned them to go, certain things happened that were not in our control, we would have spent the $25,000. I don't know if that makes you feel good or bad, but what I'm asking for is a reasonable amount of money to stay in that budget so that we do not, with good planning, so that we do not have to go through this exercise of coming to the board every time we need something. I, you know, there's the whole spending authority issue that Rebecca explained, and that piece of it, and what you can and cannot abdicate is your authority, and then there's my constitutional authority to decide and use my discretion in what's going to go to trial and what's not, and I'm not going to defer that to anybody.
Supervisor, stop.
Couple things. You had a proposed budget of $4.3 million approximately. The CAO's recommended is 2.2.
$2 million of that, just to interject, pardon me, but that was for the DA building that is more
Right, and that money's still set aside, right.
No, not all of it.
From the judicial construction
Yeah, and that was because when we had the budget training, you know, I asked a question because it came up that if you had, if there was capital projects that you wanted, you were supposed to put some money in your budget, and, you know, I asked somewhat facetiously, but not really, because, you know, we didn't put money in last year. And I said, well, is that why we didn't get our building? Is that why things didn't go forward? Because we didn't budget for it? And, you know, it was kind of, it's all new, and so, you know, when it came down to it, I said, well, let's just err on the side of caution and put some money in there. It was, it was just, you know, out of, you know, a sense of what if that is what happened? And there was no clear answer at the training, because it was, it was all new, and so I just, I just put it in there. And so it's, it's not in there now, and this, because this needs to be someplace else. And so it is in the other, the CIP, CIP budget is the $1 million. So that's how that happened.
Overall, getting to the '18, '19 final and the '19, '20 recommended, we're approximately $22,000 over that. Is that mostly raises and other things? Because I know we take out $52,000, or $32,000 and 52 here. Where is this? I mean, I'm not chasing down where the extra costs are. Is it employment? Salaries, wages, one point? I mean, it's salaries and wages. It shows, it shows that when it's going down on recommended. So I'm trying to chase it.
There was an, actually, in this case, most departments know that there was a delta increase with the unfunded liability
Oh, okay.
In this particular budget unit.
I see it now.
It actually went down, and then there were two personnel
Unfunded liability is significantly more.
By $96,000. So that actually helped out this budget unit quite a bit. There were two positions, the ones that are being recommended, the senior department analyst, and then a PCF-based add-fix that we incorporated into this budget. That was a technical error that was uncovered and remedied in this budget, which is why it's in that add there.
Understood. I just, you know, a little bit off subject, I just have one other question, 4608. Who writes the DA's office bad check?
Oh.
That's it.
Very good. I don't think that answers
That's the program that we run in-house.
Supervisor Mills, you had some questions?
Thank you. So we're still holding $1 million in 5763, the CIP section?
I have to double-check
Or 56, it's 5673 or 5763, depending upon which CIP you look at, by the way. The number seems to jump around. Just a point, I'm showing $1 million there.
Judicial construction
Okay, and we didn't, we had it in last year, $1 million, and we didn't do anything with it. Didn't start anything, didn't do anything with it, just sat there. So we're going to put $1 million in, and it's just going to sit there again for another year? I could be collecting interest on that.
We are.
We are. We are.
Supervisor Mills, I think that comes to the ad hoc, why we exist.
Why we exist. It was interesting, I'm trying to figure this out, because in 5121 Communications, you spent almost $3,000 more than $4,800 budgeted, and so there was a reduction. In other words, when you look at your department request in 6180, that's a shift. And yet I don't see that same shift when it comes to 5241, where you were over again by $2,500 in office expense, and it wasn't even accounted for. So are you going to be upside down again in both of those budget line items?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't think we'll go, well, if we don't get it backed up to 17, we'll do our best to keep it at 16, as far as the office expense goes. We did have a number of employees that needed to have stand-up desks. There were some equipment one-time purchases that I don't anticipate coming up for this year. Some of it was also computer upgrades, and we moved between lines for the computer upgrades. I think, and I want to say, well, our phones, I think, were the minor equipment down below, so we didn't budget anything for minor equipment going forward. I've discussed it with my staff, and the numbers that we requested are our best estimate on what we're going to need for next year.
Okay.
So, and there definitely were some things that I hope are one-time expenses for last year.
When I look at the position and control list, you had three positions, a district attorney investigator, one, a fore, and a program coordinator that were vacant in this list, but they were also vacant last year. Any hope?
The DAI position I'm hoping to fill within the next few months. I don't want to jinx it, but I am hoping to fill that finally. And the program coordinator is on the list to eliminate. I'm combining the program coordinator with the part-time desk for the senior department analyst. The CCP has agreed to use the funding for the program coordinator for half of the senior department analyst position. We think that's a better fit. I worked with HR on choosing that position as the one that would be a better fit for the mission for that position, and so it's the two positions becoming the one. So the program coordinator is my hope, is my hope to fill the senior department analyst, but the program coordinator was going away. And the DDA four, that is the cannabis attorney, and no, I've had no luck so far.
Okay. So you removed position 3024 in Office Tech 2 that you had in the list last year. It's not in this list?
If it's not in the list, then it was
And then you added a position 3030 at DDA three?
30.
Position 3030 is, but it's filled. I mean, it was filled, but it was added from last year.
Yes.
Okay.
With the elimination of the administrative assistant position.
Because I did run into
That was a wash.
It's not in your area, but I did run into one position that miraculously appeared without the board ever knowing about it, and I will discuss that when that particular department shows up.
So it wasn't mine?
No, it was not yours.
Shoot, that's good.
I'm very concerned, though, that when we talk about reclassifications or adding or removing positions, then, you know, I got to take the time to go back and dig through the record to find out, well, did they show up before the board? Did the board authorize it? You know, what, how did this position appear? And so sometimes you get into these shuffles of disshuffling positions, and also pay rates, and also job classifications. So there's a whole realm here that can happen outside the realm of the board if we're not paying attention.
Well, I think HR and the auditor's office are working very closely with the departments now to make sure that you don't have unfilled positions that you're paying for essentially, because there is that cost that goes with position, even though it's unfilled. And we, they, we met, and we went through a whole spreadsheet of what they thought we had, what we thought we had, and made sure that everything was aligned, especially with our victim services division. We have the two grants, and there's multiple positions in those two grants. We figured out a way around trying to maneuver quickly to do recruitments when we get money, without having to have all these positions on the books that you're paying for with no one there. So they've been doing a lot of work on that.
Ms. York, I'm just
I believe all my positions are cleaned up.
Sorry. I'm just concerned that we would have vacant positions for, hopefully not two years running in any department, that we either filled it, or we give it back to the CAO to find some other home for that money. And I'm just using that as the example. That's all I have. Oh, by the way, how's your WASP card doing?
It's parked.
It's parked.
It's parked.
So you don't use it at all?
I have a couple of staff that will use it now and again, but it does not get used much.
People can talk to you offline about what that means, but we are spending some money on offsite storage costs as well.
That is for a case that we have. We have to store evidence. We have been very fortunate over the years that our partners store stuff for us for free, but we have definitely reached a point where they just don't have room, and we finally have to start paying for some of our storage. We had an incident where another agency actually threw away a piece of evidence. So we are working towards being a little bit more self-sufficient and having at least a little bit of control, even if it is offsite. For that reason, and because we've kind of used up all our favors, and it's been a number of years, it's been a good run. But the Sheriff's Office, the HP Angels Camp, they do what they can to help us out, but sometimes we have certain cases where the items are just too big, or we have too much, and it's got to be stored somewhere. So we did have to finally bite the bullet, if you will, and find another location to store some evidence.
Can I ask you about Victim Services now?
Sure.
Or is that a separate issue? You have six budgeted, but you've maintained four vacancies?
Yep. It's a recruitment and retention issue. They've been filled and vacated, filled and vacated.
So it's just been a constant rotation for you?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
That's...
And what we're going to do, I believe we're bringing that down to either one or two positions, and then we will be recruiting on an extra higher basis, with the understanding that if someone is going to be staying, then we can come and seek permission to have the position, be a regular position. That way, we're not carrying so many vacant positions.
That's what I was looking to the CAO to ask him, just to rethink this a little bit, because we're sitting there with four vacant positions year over year. That just doesn't make sense, even though it's a rotational problem. We just need to rethink how we're looking at it.
And that's the issue with the grants. The money comes in, and then, you know, it's maybe six months to use the money or a year to use the money, but it takes three months to get the position established, and then you're recruiting, and then who wants a six-month job? It's been this constant cycle. So we met with HR and the Auditor's Office and figured out, I think Admin was there as well, trying to come up with a solution. So that's what we're going to try.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, my end.
Any further questions for the District Attorney?
All right, we will go to a little public comment, and then we will break till tomorrow.
Hi, Susan Morse. I wasn't prepared to bring this up, but I spent 45 years of my life in a law office. I'm paralegal, and I was the administrator of the law office. I'm kind of stunned that an attorney has to come to a board and discuss expert witness fees and whether they have enough money to be able to get those funds when they're about to go to trial, and they have to have expert witnesses. And at budget time, I'm not even sure how she may even know what she would...what trials or what...when she needs expert witnesses throughout the next 12 months. I mean, you can plan some of it, but sometimes you don't. The District Attorney is the...she is the District Attorney. They're the ones...she's the one. Her office prosecutes the crimes in this county. When we first moved here, we went to the DA's office within probably a month or two, just looking around the county, and we were stunned that she was in a trailer. I mean, literally stunned. I couldn't even imagine the DA's office, any DA's office in California, being in a trailer. Hopefully, someday, she will not be in there. But also, training. She mentioned training, legal training. Training for lawyers is very expensive. Training for paralegals is very expensive. So if that's what she's talking about, that's an expensive proposition. Megan probably can talk about that, too. Supplies? I don't know how law firms could not...it'd be disaster if they ran out of supplies, ran out of paper. I mean, ran out of all kinds of things. So all I'm asking is, and I'm urging you, please, think about what the position of District Attorney is, how that fits in this county. She's the prosecutor for the crimes in this county. Please, I urge you. I've been through here, I've been on three or four years now, and every year, our District Attorney, many years, has been rejected, and every year, I kind of burn inside. But it didn't really get to me until today, that even she has to ask for...make sure she has enough money from you for expert witness fees. So I'm asking you, please, give the District Attorney what she needs on behalf of all of the community and you and the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, I will recess us until 9:00 tomorrow morning. Does that work for everybody?
No 8:00?
All right, well, everybody, 9:00, and let's get her done tomorrow. Thank you.
11:00.
I'm going to make sound with Tina, that's for you.